So, over to the roll call.
Okay, Rita Patino? Virtual.
Here.
Tom Butterworth?
Here.
Janet Fonz? Not here. Luke Kaufman? Mike Morrow?
Here.
Maria Naughton, I'm here. Kimberly Norton?
Here.
Hillary Ormond?
Here.
Christina Ross?
Here.
Eric Thunam?
Here.
Penny Young?
Here.
And Jennifer Zonis?
Here.
Okay, ready to go.
Okay, we'll now call the meeting to order. This is the Town of New Canaan Town Council regular meeting for March 19th, 2024. We'll go right to item number two on the agenda, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address, and comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Are there any public comments? In-house, outside, anywhere? Nobody? Okay, great. All right, moving on to item number three on the agenda, the first selectman update, five minutes from the first selectman.
All right, ready?
We're very strict, so five minutes.
Hello, everyone. So, it's been kind of full-on budget for the last few weeks, but in addition to that, since the most active thing we've been doing in Town Hall right now is we have three requests for proposals that have come back. So, we bid out, I think I mentioned at a prior board meeting, our pension plan for the, all the town employees that are on the pension plan and police and fire, and actually Board of Education. Vanguard is no longer managing public pension funds. So, we went out to bid, we got 12 respondents, and we have a committee that will be reviewing those respondents. Our first meeting will be to kind of cut back 12. We're not going to interview 12 people, but so, and we have members of the Pension Committee, we have an outside advisor who is a pension advisor and has been in that consulting business forever. So, I think we have a good team to kind of review, and so we'll, you know, stay tuned. We'll be looking at that. We also went out to bid for both internal and external audit, and we received two, two proposals for external. So, that's the main audit that, you know, we review every year. CLA and PFK O'Connor Davies, who is our current, are the two companies that responded to the request for proposal. So, the Audit Committee meets March 27th. That will be, those proposals will be reviewed by the Audit Committee, myself, and Mike. The joy of establishing an Audit Committee means you get to help pick the, who the external and internal auditors are. So, stay tuned. We'll keep you in touch with, you know, what, who. We received six proposals for internal audit, and, but the most time-sensitive thing is the external audit. We need to pick somebody by June so that we can, you know, have that ready to go for this year's audit and working with, with the town. So, we'll, we'll focus on that, and then we will review the proposals of the six internal auditors. But the, the other thing with the internal audit is we need to sort of identify what areas, and the Audit Committee will drive that pretty heavily, what areas of the internal audit we want to have them look at. And then, the final RFP that we put out is for legal services. We received five responses. Really, only two were people that we could really work on, that could handle the breadth and depth of services we needed as a town. So, we will be interviewing at the end of, let's see, where, next week, the two firms that we have selected to bring in to review. And so, stay tuned. So, it's been, it's been pretty busy with RFPs.
Is the two firms people that we already work with? Is one of them the group that we already work with now?
Yes. So, Burch and Moses is one of the two firms that we are bringing back in. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, moving along. Agenda item number four, the Saks basketball court reconstruction. And I'll just read the, for the record, for everyone out in TV land, as John Engle said, "Approval of a Request from the Department of Public Works in Partnership with the Saks Middle School PTC and the Board of Education to Enter Into a Contract with Burns Construction in the Amount of $193,433.65, plus a 15% contingency fee of $29,000 for a total cost of $222,433.65. Project entails the reconstruction of four basketball courts and playing, and playing area at Saks Middle School. The funds are being provided by the Saks Middle School Parent Teacher Council, and the project has been approved by the Board of Education." At this 15 minutes.
15 minutes. Right, we're five. Yeah. So, thank you very much for having us. I'm joined with Jess and Jess. I'll make it easy, Jess and Jess. They're the Saks PTC co-presidents, right? So, this is an interesting dilemma. So, what they're proposing to do is do an improvement on town land. So, there's section 10-2 of the, of the ordinances, which is known as the Bach Amendment, which is basically if the, if the work doesn't come through the funding bodies, you actually have to approve it since then, an improvement on town land. The Board of Selectmen's already approved the contract contingent upon the council approving the project as it's, as a whole. What I wrote in the beginning, that's basically everything that went to the Board of Selectmen. Yours is basically the last paragraph down is basically your, your mandate, so to speak. You know, if you like the project and you like the idea of the project, then please approve it. You know, it's, it's a fantastic project. We've, they've been working incredibly hard on it, raised all the money. I don't want to take any of their, their fire away, but they'll, they'll kind of walk you through what the project is, and then if you have any questions, we'll answer it. And then in the end, if you approve it, then we're happy. We'll go back to the Board of Ed. P&amp;Z had no role because it's a already established basketball court. There's nothing else to happen other than your approval, and then we'll go forward and sign the contracts. So, you guys want to?
Perfect. So, as Tiger said, I'm Jessica Knowles, and this is Jessica Hutter, or Des Hutter, and we're the Saks PTC co-presidents. We thought it would be helpful just to share some of the reasoning behind why we want to do the project, and then our process to date. So, the reason why we picked Hawks Court to really focus on is, I don't know if you want to go to the picture slides to show everyone, but there's like before and after. It's, I guess you're going to talk about some of that stuff. It needs some work. But what we decided to do to raise the money, we figured it would be pretty expensive, is we focused our annual fundraiser called Celebrate Saks. We gave it a theme called Just Play, and we tried to have a week-long, you know, set of activities that highlighted why it's important for kids to get out and play regardless of what you like to do, you know, get outside, enjoy time outside. And we were hoping it would entice people to donate to our fundraiser. In general, we had 426 families donate, and we raised over $160,000. So, and, and why we really want to, you know, improve these courts in the blacktop area is because it's, it is the most utilized space. Mr. Guesic, the principal, says, "Other than the cafeteria, this is the one space that everyone uses at some point during the course of the day." You know, gym classes go out there, kids go out during recess. It's a place where they sometimes have bigger, like, you know, class and team meetings and things like that. And it's also a community-wide resource. So, on the weekends and after school, it's used by families if there's, you know, soccer games or lacrosse games, people come over and play basketball. There's, you know, basketball leagues that, you know, have games there. So, we just thought it would be a wonderful thing to do for our families, our kids, and the greater community. So, I'll talk a little bit about our process to date, how we got to the number for what the project is going to cost. And as you can see from the pictures, well, the last picture that was up, it is in some pretty dire need of refurbishment. So, as Jess said, we raised over $160,000 last October through our Celebrate Saks campaign. We worked with McCord Engineering at the end of last summer on the town's recommendation, just to get our site plans and figure out exactly what we wanted to do. And the RFP was released on January 11th. We held a mandatory walkthrough on January 25th, and we had two sealed bids received on February 1st. The lowest qualified bidder that we found was Burns Construction, and that was sort of determined going through the bids with Tiger and the Board of Ed. They are aware that they cannot start work until June 17th, which is basically the day after school ends, and that it needs to be done one week prior to the 2024, 2025 school year starting. They have assured us that they can meet that timeline. So, our plans for the space, the footprint is not going to change. So, if you know the space, there will be new fencing installed, but it's going to be in the exact same spot it currently is. We're going to remove, there's a curb at the very back of the space, which gives us about an extra two feet, where right now it just weeds and kids tread on it. We'll replace the asphalt surface with new asphalt and a sport court coating. We're going to regrade the space to get it as flat as we can to about a 1% grade. We'll repaint the basketball court, so there are two equal-sized courts that are going to be proper middle school-sized basketball courts. Each court will have two hoops, and we're going to put an extra practice hoop in the back corner for kids who just don't want to be in a game but want something else to do. We're also going to purchase new tables, board games, stuff like that, to put in the corners. So, for kids who don't want to play basketball or do anything like that, they have a place to sit and read or just hang out. And as I mentioned, we're going to replace the fencing with new black eight-foot fencing around to hopefully try and keep the balls from going in the parking lot. So, budget. You can see sort of the breakdown of what we're going to do. The winning bid was, call it $193,000 and change, $10,000 for the hoops, a little more than $10,000 for the tables. As part of our Celebrate Saks campaign, if you donated over a certain amount, we did say that we would put your name on a plaque. So, around $2,700 for the donor recognition plaque, $1,400 for some sturdier trash receptacles, which brings us to the total cost of $217,895.90, which again, the PTC will be funding in full. So, that's kind of where we are. And any questions?
That's an excellent project and fantastic spearheading of that, seriously. It's just, you know, I'm always blown away by the generosity of residents in town to contribute, but for people to step up and coordinate, because you have a million things going on in your life, so to throw this on top is, is another big burden. So, that, that's awesome, and it's a true win for the town. My question is, it just seems like it's going to be pretty low maintenance moving forward, but that does become Tiger a public works issue, a Board of Ed issue, like?
I'm sorry, I say?
Maintenance upkeep over the next 15, you know, years?
Maintenance upkeep will, well, that'll be a decision between the BOE and the, and the town itself. The BOE will manage it while it's, you know, during the season, and then if there's snow, they'll come in and clear the snow, which they do now. But on a maintenance basis, that'll likely fall back over to the Parks Department. So, we'll have, about every five years, there'll be some work that'll be, need to be done on the coating to ensure that it, that it'll last. The, the surface itself will be a blacktop surface with an athletic coating over the top of it. As long as we shovel it nicely, we shouldn't have a problem. It'd be a similar surface to what we have other areas. So, Hinding will do that surface for us, and Hinding has the surface for our pickleball courts and our tennis courts at the high schools, so we're working with the same contractor there. Burns is doing the overall work and having Hinding come in and do the final work for them. So, we don't anticipate a problem there, and the overall cost is not that expensive for a recoating or for maintenance that goes on with it. So, we think we can absorb that into our budget.
Good. Like, it's like with any project, when we improve anything in town, you know, what's the cost moving forward and who's going to bear it? So, but it seems pretty minimal overall. So, it's just a due diligence type of a question to ask.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
I just want to thank you both for doing all this. I think it's a great idea. My kids who went to Saks spent all their time on those courts, and we had birthday parties there in the summer. So, it's, it's really a great thing for the whole community. Will there be a warranty on the surface or?
There's a, there's a one-year warranty on the surface itself. We haven't had an issue with Hinding at all on their surfaces. We had a little bit of bubbling that happened over at Mead. I think that there was a little bit of moisture that got underneath it as I did the coating, and they actually came back, no questions asked. And then actually, while we were meeting with them for this project, we were talking about having them come back, and they wanted to just come back and take another look themselves, even though we're now well past a year. They would come back and help us with anything. They had, God forbid, there was another issue. So, we get one year out of it, and then after that, it comes to our side, you know, barring that we go out there and scored or something like that.
Anyway, we can get a longer warranty, or is that more expensive?
That's, it would be, it's, yeah, the, the one-year warranty is included in the actual installation.
Yeah.
As, as it goes, I can ask them for what it might be for a, you know, say, a future insurance policy, if you will. We can certainly ask them that question at that time.
Okay, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations on your fundraising. How long did it take you to raise $190,000?
Two weeks.
That's awesome.
Pretty good.
The only other question I had is, are that, the tables you're talking about, are they going to be fixed, or are they going to be movable?
No, they're movable. So, if you've been on the Saks property at all, you'll see.
Not in many years.
There are some kind of spread throughout the campus, both on the internal courtyards and out front. They'll be similar to that, sort of all-weather outdoors.
Yeah, all right.
Thanks. Mike, Rita has her hand raised. Mike, Rita has her hand raised.
Sorry. Rita, please.
Hi, yeah, thanks. So, I just want to say, so, these questions have all, I've actually been following this from the very beginning, and so I actually knew the answers to all those questions. I live across from Saks. I walk by this every day. My son went to Saks. I see the amount of use this court gets, not just from the students at Saks, but from the community as a whole. And I just, I think this is incredible utility for the community. It increases the value of the school, contributes to the greater community. I just think you guys have done an amazing job, and I just want to, this is an example of, you know, a project that has such great value for the entire community, and I really appreciate all the work that you've done. I just needed to say that, since I lived right across, and I've, I've been wanting this to happen for years, and I really appreciate it. I just need to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah. Can I just ask? I'll ask.
You can ask.
Just because this is different than, you know, it's coming as for approval, we don't need a public, a notice or anything.
No.
This project.
No, you don't. It just, you know, as part of the statute, it just reads that, since it didn't come through the normal budgetary process, it has to go to you for approval. Actually stemmed from Dunning Stadium, if you will, at the time, because Dunning was done as a donation, and then how are we going to maintain it? And at the time, they, they set up its own fund for Dunning itself that had to be self-funded. Other improvements don't have that. Other improvements would have to fall back on the town or the BOE. So, that's the reason for the council to be involved at this point.
Do you think we could just get the presentation on the iPads at some point?
Oh, it was supposed to be sent it.
We sent it around. I don't know if you?
Oh, it came in mail?
Yeah, it came in the mail. Sorry, it came in a little bit late. That was my fault. That wasn't theirs.
Oh, that's all right. Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure.
It's there, yeah. Yeah, well, I believe it's there. You know, Pam said it was, so I, that's it. She says it's there, it's there.
Okay.
Any other questions on this agenda item?
Yep.
Okay. With no other questions, then we'll have a motion. Well, do we want to have the actual motion read out accordingly? Reread what I read, say, you know, "I like a motion for," and read that. Unless you want, Maria can do it. I was going to have her do it.
I'm happy to. I just.
Go for it, Penny.
Go for it, all right. I move approval of a request from the Department of Public Works in partnership with the Saks Middle School PTC and the Board of Education to enter into a contract with Burns Construction in the amount of $193,433.65, plus a 15% contingency of $29,000, for a total cost of $222,433.65. The project entails the reconstruction of four basketball courts and a playing area at Saks Middle School. The funds are being provided by the Saks Middle School Parent Teacher Council, and the project has been approved by the Board of Education.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? Okay.
Christina?
Yes, I'd just like to ask that it be placed on the, on the tablet for Town Council, and from here on in, if there are any presentations, to please include them in the tablet.
I think it is on the tablet now. I, I just asked Christina, it came via email, but we'll get it on the tablet.
Thank you.
We have a separate tablet and we email?
Okay, so we'll now vote. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving along to item, agenda item number five, the New Canaan High School Entrance Sign Project. The Department of Public Works, on behalf of the New Canaan High School Parent Teacher Council, the New Canaan Board of Education, per Town Code Chapter 10, quote, "Approval of Improvements," close quote, section 10-2, is requesting approval for the installation of a new New Canaan High School campus entrance sign at the intersection of Farm Road and New Canaan High School to replace the current sign installed in 1998. 10 minutes, Tiger.
Thank you. So, thank you again. Exact same situation, only different players. So, I'm joined at the table by Ann Wagner and Sarah Radek, right? Rita, Rita.
Freda.
Got it, sorry. PFA co-presidents blew it at New Canaan High School, and Heather Bullinger from, she's the VP of Gifts and Grants for the PFA at New Canaan High School. So, this is a very similar situation, where they want to improve the signage, the entrance sign to the high school. This one will have to go to P&amp;Z for an 8-24 review and a signed site plan application. Both have been filed with P&amp;Z. We'll be going there next week. The reason for the 8-24 is because it's a substantial improvement from what's there. The basketball court was not necessarily, was already a basketball court. Replacing a basketball court doesn't need a 8-24 review, which is whereby does it meet with the town's plan of conservation and development. That's the state statute. And then the site, sign plan, the sign, site plan application as well, because of, of its proximity to the road and the fact that it will be an additional sign on the campus. So, we actually have to ask for a special permit for that work. So, you guys can take it away.
Great. Thank you. I'm Ann Wagner, one of the PFA co-presidents, and as Tiger mentioned, we're here to discuss the front sign to the high school. You might have driven past it many, many times and not really noticed it. With that said, the granite slab sign was a gift from the class of 1998, and it was replacement from the previous sign, which was made of carved wood. So, that is in the first image of this slide, and then the second one being what currently sits at the site. And again, that's a gift from the class of 1998. So, we are proposing to do a new project, and after visiting with Principal Egan over the summer, we asked him what was on the top of his list, and he named, he gave this new sign as a request. So, we're all very proud of our schools, and as PFA representatives, we would like to have something that honors the excellent high school that we're all privileged to have. So, with that, I'm going to pass it along to Sarah, who will continue to talk to you through, through the process.
Yep. So, we are very pleased to present to you our proposal for a new entrance sign. And Tiger, I'll just have you click to the next one.
Voila.
Our overarching goal with this project was to design a sign that, as Ann said, reflects the character not only of the town, but of the excellence of New Canaan High School. We also wanted it to be very low maintenance and something that would stand the test of time, and we think we've achieved that with this design. You'll probably recognize it a little bit, because it was inspired by the New Canaan Library, our new library. It will measure three and a half feet high by 20 feet long by two feet thick, and it will be built out of natural stacked stone in a gentle curve that follows the curb line of the entrance there. It will feature 10-inch-high architectural metal letters in a font that is the same as the lettering on the school building right now. And we, in your appendix of the presentation, you can see two locations where the letters are on the building. Well, at this point, we're also planning to have five very inconspicuous landscaping lights so that it will shine just on the letters in the evening. It will be visible. And when completed, our hope is that this will really be a reflection of the pride we take in our school and of the outstanding quality of New Canaan High School.
I'm sorry, real quick. Tiger, can you go back to the previous slide? I skipped that.
No.
So, if you can look on this slide. So, the first image just shows you that the current sign, it's proportionally too small for this location, difficult to read. The middle shows just the weathering that's occurred with the current sign, and then the third shows the, the corrosion that's currently occurring. Just wanted to mention that, since we didn't touch on that before. Thank you.
And how are we going to do it? As you guys well know, we have a very generous, giving community, and fortunately, we are in a position as the PFA that we have the funding right now. It's about $33,000 is our estimated cost, and we have that funding to pay for this project this year. And assuming that all goes well here, and plating and zoning, and then the Board of Ed accepts our gift, our intention is to be able to install the new sign in time for graduation in June, with the, with the hope that perhaps the seniors of the graduating class of 2024 might take a nice picture with it, that we could feature as, as our new gift and entrance to the school. Do you guys have any?
So, like I said to the last group, thank you so much. You know, like I said, it's, we're all running around crazy, and to donate your time is awesome. And then, second, the generosity of the community is just always, you know, it's stunning. So, thank you so much for that. I love this project. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I think it looks great. I think it, the other sign you write, you can't see it. People don't even notice that it's there. Did you say the letters are 10 inches high?
Yes.
Okay. And it will be lit at night. So, yeah, no, I thank you so much for doing this, and I think it's a great project. Thank you.
It's got a foundation under it, right, and so?
Yes, it will have.
Looks great.
Could you tell me about the sign that's there now? You said that was donated by?
The class of 1998, yes.
Just the slab, just the granite slab. The pedestal has been there since maybe the late 70s, early 80s.
So, is the granite slab staying then?
The granite slab, we hope will be relocated, as long as it is removed in one piece. It survives the move.
Okay, I just think there needs to be consideration if you have efforts that are fundraising efforts, and then we just?
Exactly. No, we've been in touch with that class and mentioned that we might be moving it, and so we'll continue those conversations upon approval and have it moved to an agreed-upon spot.
Perfect. Perfect.
Who designed it? It's beautiful, like, with the landscape lights, and who was the?
It was a collaborative process. Really, we started it last summer, and it's gone through multiple iterations. And we, when we very first came up with the idea, we went really big. And then, through multiple conversations with our board, our executive board, and with Principal Egan, and with our landscape architect, we scaled it back a bit. So, it really was a team, team design project.
But the New Canaan Library sign was a very large iteration for what was possible.
That's it? All right, let's have a motion. Who'd like to make a motion?
Oh, I, oh, sorry. Of course I have another question. So, the Board of Ed heard your presentation last night, but didn't approve the funds. So, do we wait till after they approve the funds? That's more of a question.
It's more, you're approving the project and concept, and then they'll approve the funding in the end. It still has another hoop to go through as well, and it would be beneficial to have the council's approval before I go to P&amp;Z, you know, before we go to P&amp;Z to ask for their approval. we go to P&amp;Z to ask for their approval as well. So, it'd be, you know, that you approve the fact that you would like to see this come to fruition. That'll help us next week when we go back to the BOE and then back to P&amp;Z. We believe the BOE is, you know, wholly on board, but they didn't vote on it last night. And then P&amp;Z, we've gotten favorable reviews from our town planner associated with it. But, yeah, it would be, as a project as a whole, if you're, you know, if you're happy with the way the project is, you approve the project and then we go forward with the approvals elsewhere. Very similar to what it would happen in a budget situation whereby you approve the budget because you approve the project and then I've got to go back to wetlands for approval. Similar, I got the boardwalk at Irwin Park approved last night, you know, similar to you approved that project last year and we got the inland wetlands approved it last night. So, very similar situation.
I think everyone agrees it's a great idea. I just was wondering about the sequence.
Okay, who wants to make the motion? Eric, please.
I move that the town council approve the installation of a new New Canaan High School Campus Entrance Sign at the intersection of Farm Road and New Canaan High School to replace the current sign that was installed in 1998. Obviously with the understanding that the Board of Education, Planning and Zoning and appropriate other bodies involved approve and move forward as well.
Okay, we have a second? Any discussion? Having no discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope we get it done in two.
Okay, moving on to item, agenda, agenda item, number six, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA appropriations. Review and approve recommendation for the appropriation of the remaining ARPA funds in the amount of $747,634. Five minutes.
Well, you basically said most of it right now? So, I'll give you the overview. Our ARPA funds is $5.9 million. We've committed to date for 5.4, 5.2, sorry. So, we've been remaining the 747, 747 left. So, coming in front to get the approval to bring that back into the general fund. All the funds have to be committed by the end of this year. They don't have to be spent, but they just have to be committed. So, the decision has been made to take the additional, what's left of the 47, 747 back into the general fund.
And then, does that just go sort of into the general slush fund or is it somehow segregated?
No, it goes into the general fund in their fund balance.
Okay.
Yep. A rollup.
Is there, is there any thought to track that any of that money goes towards, you know, I know this is allowed through ARPA to do this, but that it goes towards like nonprofits and other things that it's gone to in the past?
Well, the, we've committed the 5.2, the nonprofits are already in that number.
Yes.
Am I answering?
No, no, I, sorry. I understand that part. I meant the, the 747 that is being transferred to the general. Will there be any effort? You said it's not going to be in a separate fund, it's going to be in the general.
It's going into the general fund, yes.
Is there any thoughts to maybe, you know, target the same types of groups that received ARPA funds?
So, okay, I can speak to that, actually. So, the way ARPA was written, it can go to, to the taxpayer. And so, we have given many, lots of donations to not-for-profits that were impacted during COVID. But the taxpayers in New Canaan were also impacted during COVID. And so, the belief is, is that, you know, some of that money will go back into the general fund to offset taxpayer expenses that were also impacted.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I feel like this has been discussed. I just want to be, put on the record, so to speak, that have you had any inquiries from other people who might be interested in applying, given this balance or anything like that in the time between when this was first announced? That this, this move would be happening into the general fund and now?
I'm not aware after the grouping that they did do and they went through the community foundation to apply, to make those applications. I'm not aware of any that came out after that fact.
Okay.
From that point on.
Okay.
And I haven't gotten any. I have not gotten any.
There's no outstanding request?
Not to me, no.
Okay.
No.
And as Diana said, it's, it's, the reason coming into the general fund is the loss of revenue during COVID.
Is it mostly parking?
Parking was part of it, but you know, different, yeah, revenue book, it went down. So, it allows you to do that.
Conveyance fees, you know?
Yeah, sure.
There were all kinds of hits to the budget during COVID, so.
Okay, we need a motion here to approve? Yes, Jennifer, please make the motion.
I'll make a motion to review, to approve the recommendation for the appropriation of the remaining ARPA funds in the amount of $747,634.
We have a second? Maria seconds? Oh, yes, discussion, Rita.
All right, yeah, I just, I'm following on a little bit of what Hillary said. So, I understand that it's going back to the taxpayer and I'm all for it. But it's really going back to the general fund. Are we considering, you know, using it to offset, say, this year's, you know, taxpayer burden or, because right now, it's not really going back to the taxpayer necessarily directly. It's going into the general fund. Are we considering how we actually get it into the taxpayers' hands? I'm just.
Right. Well, so if you follow most of the budgets every year, the Board of Finance, after this, takes general fund money and uses it to offset the mill rate or the, you know, the expenses of the taxpayer every year. And the more money that's in the general fund allows the Board of Finance to take more money out of the general fund to return to the taxpayer. So, I would encourage the Board of Finance to make that move. I, Ann and I were just talking about this, this year and, you know, we were wondering if you could specifically, at this level, move that as a budget reduction item. We need to kind of.
Just true, make sure you can do that.
Right, if you can do that or not, because it's a revenue item, so we need to. But it would be an offset to expenses. So, you know, we just don't know technically if that's okay. So, we'll find out the technical answer to that. But if, if we don't do it here.
We have enough in our general fund, even if this wasn't moving to smooth out the mill rate if we needed to. So, it's not clear that this is going directly to that. It's just adding to that balance that we have in the general fund, right?
Well, it will, if you don't do it here, yes, it would go to the, it goes to the general fund. But the expectation is, is that we keep a certain percentage in the general fund. We need it for our Moody's rating and all that kind of stuff, which we just went through. And they were very focused on our general fund balance. So, and we got a very good rating, but also we went out and got a really low rate on our bonds because we have money in our general fund. So, that directly impacts the taxpayer because it reduces our interest expense. So, it's, it's a virtuous cycle having money in that general fund. So.
I'd like just to reiterate what Rita and Hillary were saying and you said you're already looking into it. Can it be extra added in? Because there is always general fund money that goes in to bring down the mill rate. But this is like an extra amount. It would be great to have that impacted, the mill rate in that respect, just because we don't know what the mill rates, you know, never, you don't know what it is any year. But it sounds like you're already thinking about that.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I really just wanted to make sure it's a direct contribution, only because I have been following it and I know that we do decide some years to offset things. But we also decide to spend more money in some cases. So, I just want to make sure that the taxpayer is getting, you know, the benefit of this. And, and it sounds like that's what you want to. I just want to make sure that my, I'm reinforcing that, that's all.
Yep. And based on what Diana said, once we know the legal side of if we're putting it through next year's budget or we're putting it to the fund balance, that's the decision once we know that you can actually do it as a board.
Well, it can go to the fund balance, but then as the Board of Finance decides how much of the general fund they're going to, you know, apply to taxes, they could verbalize in their motion that $747,000 plus however much they're going to need, you know? Just so we kind of close the loop on that.
Definitely, definitely.
Agree.
Okay, any other questions, comments, discussion? No? Okay.
We need to put that in our motion.
We did.
We made the motion, yeah. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item, agenda. Agenda item number seven, appointment to confirm the reappointment of James Yao as an alternate Board of Finance member for a two-year term ending December 1, 2025.
Mike, we actually did not put in our motion that we wanted it specifically to be recognized by the Board of Finance when they do their calculations of taking monies from the general fund, that at least the $747,000 gets identified.
I, I think that's a great idea. Can you maybe not do that yet because we need to figure out if it's legal to do it that way? So, we just need to, we get, need to get the specifics around, right? I mean.
But didn't we just approve it already, so?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, whether it goes in this year or next year, that's the, we need to figure that out. So, we just need to.
Diana, when do you, when do you expect, I mean, just out of curiosity, when we?
We're currently working, what we're doing right now is estimating where we think we're going to be by the end of the year. So, typically May and last year was June is when the Board of Finance decided, or their meeting to say what we're drawing down from the fund balance. So, that would be the time.
It was the legal.
Oh, that's, that's.
Well, yeah.
The next day or so.
Yep.
And if not, it goes in the other. But just because, as Diana has mentioned, we have to keep a certain level in the fund balance.
No, we know that.
So, we may ask for it to go in, but depending on what that fund balance is going to be by the end of this year, you know, where we are in a budget.
Those are two separate things, though. We should do that anyway. This should be above and beyond that. It shouldn't be commingled with that.
No, but just, just, I just want to make everyone's conscious that we draw down the fund balance every year. If we don't put it, we're drawing down five plus this year. If we don't have revenues to offset that backup, like our tax collection, to give you back in, more into the fund balance, you're drawing more than you actually have. So, that's why I just want to make sure we put it in that, in that, I'm not sure if I'm explaining it the right way. We just have to make sure that we have enough in the fund balance at the end of this year to draw down what they're estimating now as opposed to adding more.
I think we all understand.
Okay, I just want to.
Right. So, that they're taking $5 million proposed this year, they could take out $4,300 and whatever.
And say they're putting 700. Yes, exactly. Thank you.
So, it's just a matter of this year or next year?
I know, we're just.
Yeah, so I just, that's why I would like to hold off on a motion for a specific year just so that we can figure out if we're doing it this year or next year. So, that's the only.
So, that's the understanding. There'll be another motion at the appropriate time.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good.
Did we vote? Oh, yeah, we voted. Okay, sorry.
All right. So, agenda item number seven, appointment to confirm the reappointment of James Yao as an alternate Board of Finance member for a two-year term ending December 1, 2025. Diana, do you want to make a statement or, this is the James Yao reappointment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you want to just a short statement and we'll just move it to a vote.
Get your exercise.
I knew this was coming, I just wasn't focused where on the agenda. So, yes, so the Board of Selectmen voted at, it's, I don't remember, a few, few meetings ago, to reappoint James Yao. He is a current alternate on the Board of Finance. He's been a great contributor to the Board of Finance. And so, we unanimously voted to extend James's term for another three years. So, as an alternate, so.
So, would I like to make the motion? Or the motion is to?
To, I'll make motion to confirm the reappointment of James Yao as an alternate Board of Finance member for a two-year term ending December 1, 2025.
I second.
Christina seconds. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right.
Wait, wait, wait.
Agenda item number eight, budget overview. We've, we'll have a little bit of a switch up. We're going to have the PD present right now. It's a shorter presentation, so why don't we get that underway?
Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so we'll have a presentation from the police on the budget overview or review and discussion. The police, oh, police backup. Agenda, item number eight is budget overview, review and discussion of the proposed town budget for fiscal year 2025, including a review of the following budget line items, Board of Ed, Police and Fire. We'll start out of turn with the police going first for 20 minutes. Chief DeFederico, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We will jump right into it. So, our budget building process predominantly focused on adding the three new officers that were agreed on last year. That ate up a big chunk of our increase in our budget. We want to staff the elementary schools with the SRO positions and that's going to allow us to do that. I'll quickly touch on animal control. The animal control budget request is $100,500. It, you may see an increase from previous years, but that's only because the animal control budgets were, two budgets that were now combined into one singular budget now. But going forward, you'll see it'd be much cleaner, much easier to review. Any questions on animal control?
Chief, just what's going on with the holding facility and all that? That was an issue for, you know, when we grab animals and where they are pulled up.
So, they're, they're currently housed at the dog pound down at the transfer station that works for 99% of the time. The only time it doesn't work is when it's bitterly cold and there's an issue with heating that, that area. And we have a backup plan with New Canaan Vet if that, if that's the case. If that facility goes down, we can bring our animals, if there are any, to New Canaan Vet.
Okay, thanks. No other questions, I'll move forward.
So, some quick highlights to the police department. We had close to 15,000 calls. You can see various types of calls from normal crimes, ID thefts, larcenies, burglaries, medical responses, so on and so forth. We are a pretty active and busy department.
We can go back to that for a second.
Sure.
Just so we can take another look at it.
What exactly is a school check?
So, those are location checks, again, you know, that we don't have school resource officers in the elementary schools currently. Those officers, some of our officers stop by and check in at those various schools. We have what we call liaisons now and they're assigned to various schools, private schools as well. And those officers aren't permanently embedded in the schools, but during their routine patrols, once a week, twice a week, they'll stop in and the schools check in with staff. So, those are, that's what the category is, is a school check.
I have a question about the car larcenies. How's that going in terms of the trends?
I'm sorry, the what?
The car larcenies? You know, the stuff that was happening at night, people leave their keys in the car. I was wondering how that's going? Is that improving?
It's still happening.
I figured that.
People are still leaving their keys in their car. Yeah. Whether it's trending up or down, I'm not sure, but it's about the same. Unfortunately, we, yeah, we've had some just as recently as last night and people continue to leave their cars in their vehicles, or their keys in their vehicles.
Yeah. Oh, that's too bad. Okay, thanks.
So, we do continue to focus on our community efforts. We have the Community Impact Officer, that's a downtown officer, that's continuing. We are continuing with the roving elementary school officer until we can onboard those three new officers and get the SROs in the elementary schools. We're on track. We're swearing in three new officers in a few days at the end of this month. They're scheduled to begin the Police Academy in April, which means they'll be out probably September. So, it's going to be a little tight for us to get them on the road, but I'm confident that we'll, we'll be on track for the SROs in the elementary schools for the next school year.
Are the three SROs coming from the current police staff?
Yes, yeah. So, these three new officers are not going to be the SROs. They'll backfill and we'll identify senior officers that are well-trained and well-experienced with the town and are a good fit for the elementary schools. We've met with Dr. Letzey and we've already got a focus group that'll interview the people that are interested and we're going to pick the right people for the positions.
And then will, will there still be a roving officer that goes to the private schools like St. Luke's and?
There won't be, so Shane Gibson is currently our roving officer that kind of covers all those. What we'll probably, we will continue as our liaison program with the private schools and we'll have to see how those, that'll be five SROs that we'll have after we do the elementary schools, how we can maybe task them to cover some of the private schools. elementary schools, how we can maybe task them to cover some of the private schools.
Yeah, because West is close to.
West is close to country school, yeah.
St. Luke's is kind of the one that's.
It is, but we'll, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Great.
Yeah.
Chief Rita Batino has her hand up. Rita?
Yes. Hi, Chief, how are you?
Great, how are you, Rita?
Good. Hey, I'm just curious about the, so the SROs, how, how is the position itself, like, being written, like, what the, what the role is and what the responsibilities are? And who is overseeing? What's the oversight of those positions? How is that working?
So it, it currently is overseen by our, our youth sergeant, and it's going to continue to be his responsibility. He'll be, he'll be the first-line supervisor for the group. And what, how we're going to write it up and the roles and responsibility, we're still ironing out the details of that, but we're going to make it, because it's not going to be the same as far as activity-wise as the high school or the middle school. Obviously, the elementary school's a little bit smaller. So we're going to be a little bit creative on, on what their roles and responsibilities were, will be. They'll probably help out with some other active investigations going on with the, the youth department that, that are covered by, currently by him and his, so they may pick up some investigations that are part of the high school or middle school or some additional outside of the, the framework of, of the actual elementary schools. We're also going to identify, again, this is kind of in flux because we don't know who the people are going to be, but we're going to emphasize their strengths and weaknesses. And, for example, Shane Gibson's very good on security and campus security, so he may be the one that's responsible for sort of the oversight of campus security for all of the schools. So he may bounce between the schools and do security checks, and that might be his area of expertise, whereas another officer may be expert in, for lack of a better word, DARE programs or educational programs and that sort of thing. And then, typically, Chief Walsh has experience in Fairfield with the SHAPE program, which is similar to DARE, but it's more holistic. So we're going to try to identify who the officers are and what their strengths are and give them additional responsibilities outside of their one school.
And it's not just going to be about, so, because I'm, I'm curious, because it sounds like there are different programs that they might be executing, not just, they're not just like going around the campus and making sure things are safe. It sounds like it's, it's a more active role and there's responsibilities that are being identified. So I'm just curi, honestly, I'm just curious what those things, types of things are.
Right, so that, the expectation is they're going to do more than just sit in an office or walk around as a security guard. We want to keep it engaging for them as well. We don't want it to be a boring assignment that they get burnt out from after a year. We want, we want to keep them engaged with the police department being active police officers and active in the community. So there's, there's several programs that we're looking for.
Thank you.
Quickly, I'll touch on capital summary. Our capital is, is pretty low this year compared to years past. For obvious reasons, we're, we're looking at the police department, the new police department, and we were fortunate enough to catch up with our backlog of police vehicles last year. So we had seven vehicles come into, into our fleet that were currently getting outfitted, so we were able to catch up, and we didn't need to add more than just one vehicle for this current year. So everything else on there is, is pretty much similar to years past, just normal equipment replacements, bulletproof fast replacements, mobile data terminals, and some annual contracts. And another big ticket item is our mandated body cameras, which are now required for all officers and all of our patrol vehicles. It's mandated from the state. So our overall capital ask is 249.
Chief, that annual contract for the fixed license plate readers, what happens on the pricing? Does it just goes up every year?
We've locked into a five-year fixed price, it's 28,000 for five years.
Okay, what, what year are we in the term right now?
I think this is the second year.
So is that not going up then this year?
No. No.
It's 28,000 per year for five years, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. So that's just a synopsis of our vehicles. We're looking to just add one vehicle this year, and then we'll get back on our normal fleet cycle to keep current and keep our, our fleet fresh. As we have discussed in years past, just because a vehicle has moved off of our primary, primary patrol function, we'll put it into a secondary role. It might be sent with one of the SROs who don't need a brand-new vehicle to sit, you know, park in front of the schools, and might be used for training purposes. And then if it's got any life left in it, we can designate it to another department in town, Public Works or some other staff vehicles. Or if it has no value in that regard, we'll, we'll trade them in.
Are those seven in service now or are they being fitted out?
They're, they're being fitted out. I think two are in service, one or two are up getting outfitted. It's, it's just a process to get them all outfitted, but they're, they're slowly getting on the road. And I won't read this to you, but this is the, the statute that requires and mandates us to have body-worn cameras for all of our personnel and in the vehicles.
When, when do those body cameras turn on and turn off? Is that up to the officer?
They're activated by the officer, yeah. They're, they're required anytime they have a police interaction with the public. It wouldn't, I wouldn't just have it normally running in a situation like this. But then in the vehicles, they are activated when the lights are turned on.
Okay.
And I think they have a 30-second loop that they record that's just video but not audio, but once they hit the lights, it'll, it'll start capturing everything. And the system, they synchronize together, body cameras and the, the in-vehicle cameras. Once an officer starts his shift, they'll synchronize together, so it'll be pretty clean.
Thank you.
Is there any cost associated with the retention of the data in the recorders, like across the department, like in the cloud? I mean, do we have a service contract?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the service contract, and it's part of what we see the cost in, in our capital request, yeah. Yeah, everything's a service contract now, it's, can't get away from it. That's all I have for capital. Any other questions on capital?
How long do you have to keep the recordings for?
The retention period is.
It's 90 days, isn't it?
I don't think it's 90, I think it's, I think it's less than that. I'm sorry, I don't have that.
That's okay, just curious, because that would affect the cloud storage, just wondering.
Yeah, we, we keep it for the mandated time, and then we have to expunge it, yeah. Jumping into operating summary, our operating request this year is 7.685. That is a 8.09% increase largely due to the three new officers. And, and as we described before, when we presented last year, it's much more beyond just the salary and benefits, it's everything associated with a new officer, from the training costs, the equipping, the, the academy seats, everything that's associated with it has a ripple effect throughout our budget, and that's why you see such a large increase in our budget from, from last year. If we separated out the, the three new officers, our budget ask would be more like a 3.5 increase, which would be in line with what we are expecting for. As I said, this allows us to go from 47 to 50 sworn officers along hiring timelines, which we are experiencing, but we are coming to an end, and we've, we've caught up for now. And we should swear in our, our three new officers end of this month and get them in the academy beginning in April.
So the 50 is a full complement, you think, chief?
50 will be our full complement, yes. And this kind of breaks down the school resource officers, where we're going to have them. And I, I did have some more slides about what their roles and responsibilities were, but just in the interest of time, I, those were presented to Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. So if you can see those budget proposals, you can kind of see where we're looking at for, as far as the assignments and the roles and responsibilities.
Right.
And the other favorite topic, police overtime. You know, I know some of you may have seen the, the recent article regarding highest-paid employees in town, which, you know, it doesn't, you know, it's an interesting article, and it's interesting to read, but it doesn't paint a full picture of what overtime is, and certainly not for budgetary purposes. It, it's, it's not all town employees, it doesn't include Board of Education. So it's really only a comparison of Public Works, Town Hall employees, Police Department and Fire Department. Police Department and Fire Department are the only two departments that are 24/7/365 out of those four. And the Police Department is the only department that works extra duty. So it's kind of a skewed statistic if you look at, at the top 20 employees. Of course, 17 of them are going to be police employees because we work 24/7/365, and we're the only department that works extra duty. So if you take out the extra duty hours, which are not, not, generally not tax dollars, then that list is vastly different, so just keep that in mind. And so what I've done, I think is more pertinent to the budget discussion, is to look at the number of hours of overtime and what's driving our overtime, and where we can look at for future cost savings regarding our overtime. And as you can see, you know, our overtime hours are close to 10,000 hours, and, and a lot of that is driven by shift shortages. And, you know, we're a department that requires us to have a minimum staffing. Again, we operate 24/7, and we have to have a certain level of people working at a given time. And you can see on our next slide here that all of these categories here that, that we can sort through with our scheduling software are what's driving our overtime. Now, with this information, we can look at some areas, and there are some areas that we can sort of recognize some, some controls over, and one of which that, that we've identified this year is in this administrative cost, which is overtime for officers doing workers' comp appointments, whether it be doctor's checkups or physical therapy, those sorts of things, which we are going to meet with our town insurance provider in the coming weeks to see if we can offset some of those costs, because we can identify the number of hours for those, and it is, you know, a significant cost for the town. But with that, I've worked with Human Resource Department, Cheryl, and, and we're going to meet with Karma in the coming weeks and see if we can have Karma pick up that cost or at least cover some of it for us, because those officers are going to these appointments because it's a workers' comp claim, so we shouldn't be footing the entire bill for We also are coming up on, you know, next year at this time, we'll probably be in contract negotiations, so the, the current contract is, is up July of 2025. So with this information, we're going to work with our union and see if we can negotiate some things that will sort of disperse this overtime into other areas and other opportunities. What we're noticing, the trend is that, that our younger officers enjoy their time off and don't particularly pursue supervisory responsibilities, unfortunately. You know, back in my day, when I started, that was something that kind of everybody wanted, and we had a, a large pool of people to choose from that wanted to be supervisors, and were able to fill in these acting roles, so that kind of kept our overtime costs down. So a lot of these shift shortages that you see are due to supervisory vacancies that we, we saw last year, kind of an imperfect storm, where we had a lot of supervisors out on long-term injuries, some retirements. So we had a period of time where we had a lot of supervisors that were not on staff working, so we had to backfill those with supervisory overtime, which is very costly. And given that we don't have a lot, a lot of staff that wants to pursue supervisory responsibilities, we have to look at other areas that we can pursue that might incentivize them to get more involved and give them other opportunities. So those are some of the things we're going to be looking at in the coming year during negotiations and see if we can provide something for these younger officers to encourage them to get involved and perhaps mitigate some of these overtime costs. And again, you can see a large number of hours are due to shift shortages, and the, all these categories are, are shift shortages, which eats up a large chunk of our overtime. So our overtime, overall overtime request for this year is 590. It's, that's an increase from previous year, but I think this was, this is going to be the trend, but I think this should cover us for the coming fiscal year.
What is the, is that the increase? Six, wait, what is the increase over last year?
No, that, that was year-to-date. I'm sorry, that FY '24 and the bottom line is, is what we've used, year-to-date. So we've already used about, by now, 70% of, of our overtime budget that adopted overtime budget.
You know, I was curious with the increase versus last year. I was just looking, I'm trying to find it in the book, but in terms of overtime, what the request is versus last year?
Last year was 523, this year is 590.
Rita, look at the screen. This slide.
No, I knew that, I was looking at the percentage, I was trying to figure out. I knew the amount. I was looking, I was trying to figure out the percentage increase.
Easy enough to do.
Yeah, now I'm looking, yeah.
I have a question. If, if you're just, you just stated that the overtime has nothing to do with, with the salary of the taxpayers carry on charges. How do you explain it then, the increase in overtime?
No, that's, that's not what I said. What I said was that news article included extra-duty work, which is not part of taxpayer dollars. That's not, that's not their overtime. Overtime is, 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 yeah, so that, that's why that list is a bit skewed, because it's, it's extra-duty work when, you know, as we, anybody that drives through town knows that there's numerous construction jobs going on, and there has been for years, and, and so that, those are paid by those contractors. So that's something that skewed those numbers on that list that was published in the article.
Okay, thank you, I understand.
I was sad not to see Apollo on that list, to be honest.
What's that?
I was sad not to see Apollo on the.
Apollo retired yesterday.
You retired?
So how much is the new dog? That's a lot.
Well, we're, we're, we're getting on that, so.
Everything else.
Yeah.
And when do we get him?
It's a process. We're, we're going to, we're going to present that to hopefully the Board of Selectmen in their next meeting. It's a process, it's not like buying a car where you say, I'll, I'll take that German Shepherd. It's, it's a whole process where we have to, the, the breeder has to find the dog that he thinks is a good fit, they have to kind of meet, see if they are compatible, and we're at that stage now, we think we've identified a dog, it's, it's going to be a cool story.
Do we get to approve as well?
What's that?
Do we get to approve as well?
If you want to, sure.
And does Apollo get a retirement fund or anything? Is he okay?
Yes, it's, he's got a great pension plan. Actually, it's a nice.
Because he do overtime, though.
It's a nice story. Apollo was adopted by one of our other officers, so it's, it's a great story. So it, it was, for all that Apollo's gone through, it's a, it's a happy ending, so we're, we're, we're really pleased in how it all turned out. And, and Officer Urbano's done a fantastic job to, to jump into the role under the conditions. He's far exceeded our expectations. He's, he's, you know, the people that do the training, the professionals, can't rave enough about Officer Urbano, so it's, it's a pretty cool story about the new, new dog and, and what he wants to name it. I'll just tease you with that, so.
Killing me here.
Yeah.
So for training purposes, for overtime, is it, are you finding a lot of overtime being accumulated, having to travel to the firing range that you guys use or doing that training? I mean, how much of the overtime would you say?
That is a, you know, that's always a significant driver. I won't say that was a large spike for this year, but that's always a large driver because our, the closest place we can do firearms training is an hour away, sometimes an hour and a half for some people. So we're paying people four hours of overtime to really only get an hour or so of training out of them. So it, it is a significant waste of money, I would say. I, I wouldn't say that it spiked anything, because that's kind of a consistent thing, but, you know, it, it's, I'd love to be able to, you know, get more bang out of my buck, no pun intended, if we could have something closer.
Yeah. You're still going up to Wilton, Danbury?
Danbury and Wallingford.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's it, you know, because Danbury ranges diminish their hours, they decrease their hours that we can go, so we have to look at other places, and the only other closest place is Wallingford.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if I may, Chief, I just wanted to say, so you're not a full complement of 50, you're still missing one. So I would expect that you would come through with a presentation, a new officer sometime.
All right.
Oh, because of Apollo. She's talking about the dog.
Yeah.
The dog is a joke?
Yeah.
I don't know. What day is it?
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions, anybody?
How's Locust Street?
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions, anybody?
How's Locust Street treating you guys?
It's not bad. We're we're, we've settled in there. Everything seems to be going well. We've ironed out our parking issues, right? You know, it's it's working out great, it really is for for moving a police department across town into an office building that was not meant to be a police department. We did it and it's going well, so. Largely due to the previous tenants that left it in such great shape for us. On that note.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take Chief Alba, I'll be out of turn. I appreciate the patience, Dr. Lutze. Okay, so we'll now move forward to the fire department's presentation by Chief Bassett.
We told Hillary how bad it was.
He's boiling here.
It's in my head. It's like now I'm. No, I'm.
Oh, you're hot right now?
I'm good, I'm actually good, yeah.
Well, the fire department's here, so cool it down.
Cool it down.
Let's go. Chief, ready to rock, go ahead.
All right, good evening, everybody. All right, I have a couple slides for our department budget for FY '25. Just a quick hit on our goals and objectives that we hit for this year and moving on to next year. Again, fire prevention is our, one of our primary, the primary goal of our mission statement and continue to do pub ed events. So here's our numbers. It was all put out in the in the annual report that went out at the beginning of the year. We did improve our ISO rating, which affects our insurance, all the insurance numbers, if your insurance company participates in ISO. So hopefully rates have gone down, so that's a, that was done. Finally, the the evaluation was done and completed in 2023, the end of '23.
How'd you do that?
What's that?
How'd you do that? Because we've always talked about, you know, all of the dry wells or.
Yeah, water supply. What we've increased some water supply. Aquarian has helped us a little bit with with water supply, additional hydrates. But a couple cisterns that were added. Most of it is the training, the paperwork, the inspection. So we got a lot better credit with the inspections, our pre-planning and the training records that we had. So that really helped with the with the numbers there and actually our responses to the the few structure fires that we had. We did have enough people in a reasonable amount of time that responded on scene, even during the day with our volunteer corps. So it was very good. We are started evaluating our department against national standards and that continues today. So looking at where we are, what what we still need to do as we move forward. Implemented our new records management system, which hopefully could track our, you know, our staffing on a daily basis a little better than our old system. Again, the fire prevention activities and our incident reporting. So trying to get a little more granular with the data. Put our new rescue boat in service, that was one thing after our hurricane drill last year. So we do have a rescue boat for swift water and ice rescue, which is our two primary concerns as far as water here in town. For '25, again, continuing with the national standards, continuing with that pre-planning. It is an annual requirement for the Insurance Service Organization, ISO. So the companies, the firefighters are out there hitting the, our target hazards and most of our commercial district is our goal and trying to get all that done in FY or in 2024 going into FY '25. Continue with our health and safety for our firefighters. Connecticut has put a large push on cancer reduction. So that's a a push in legal, in the legislative that came out, things that we need to do to reduce the exposure for cancer. So we're looking at a few things, a couple of my capital items directly reflect that. Continue to improve water supply, so that's still an ongoing issue and target our areas that we need to. Unfortunately, ISO doesn't think the same way we do. We'd like to tap into some pools, but ISO doesn't allow, doesn't give us credit for that yet. But the important thing is if we can tap in a pool, we'll have the water, you know, whether it affects the insurances or not, the waters there, that's the important thing. So that's one of our our targets for this year. Increase specialized rescue capabilities. We're in the process of of starting to evaluate what our capabilities are, what our staffing. And unfortunately, we had a fatality in a trench at the end of last year. So still working on that, but that was one of our goals moving into '25 before before that even happened. We're starting to look at it on a regional level also. Hiring the career assistant chief, which has been added back into the budget to fill my original position when Chief Hennessy had left. And to get into the numbers, with all that, overall, we have a 2.75% increase. It's just under 125,000. And the major drivers with this are our salary increase, which 2.5% in the contract for this fiscal year. We do have two firefighters on our staffing to start recruit school early. We do have retirements coming up after July 1 of '25. But the way the Fire Academy recruit school works, I may not get them both in in time for for both of them to start in July of '25. So we, I asked for one to start in the fall and one to start in the spring so I can guarantee their spots. Our size department, I go into a lottery. If I ask, I get one spot in the spring of next year. If I lose the lottery, we won't get that person until the fall, which will incur the rest of the year on overtime for that retirement. So that's why we asked the Stagrum starting half, one in the fall, one starting in the in the spring. So our our staffing has reflected that, so for that short term. The career assistant chief, it was funded for a half a year. FY '24, we were in the hiring process, which is, we currently have halted it based on the budget, looking at the budget to see if it was going to get funded again, but we asked for it for the full year. It's currently in the budget to take some of those, as Chief DeFrederico just said, a 24/7 operation and it's myself and the the volunteer assistant chief. So we're looking to staff that to cover, you know, 24/7 coverage and take care of some of the the additional administrative stuff that I'm, that's on my desk. Employee fitness and physicals, those have increased over the last year. So getting the NFPA and the OSHA physicals completed. So that's a major driver in the budget. Our training continues, you know, our requirements that we need to meet on an annual basis is a large chunk of the fire department budget. A major increase in apparatus repair. So that was like a 15% increase. Our apparatus is getting older, but on the good side of it, we're keeping up with them both in-house and when we have to send them out for repair. They're lasting 30, you know, 25 to 30 years. So we're getting a lot of time out of our apparatus. So on an annual basis, it's, you know, costing what seems to be a lot of money, but in the long run, it's not replacing, you know, something that because of lack of repair. So that that has increased a pretty good amount to make the budget go up that 2.75%. So that was my operating increase. And I can answer any direct questions on the lines if you so desire, or I could go right into capital.
Chief, what's the, your full complement of your?
Staff for staffing?
Yeah.
On the, at the firehouse, on the line, we have 24 firefighters. Two are officers, four are firefighters. On a given day, there's six on shift on a 24/7 shift. So they work 24 hours with six, then they have three days off. So each shift has that six.
How many volunteers you have, augmenting that?
Right now, the last count, we have 26 volunteers. Not all of them are interior qualified yet. So probably about half of them are interior qualified. Any other questions on operating? All right. For capital expenses, total of 197,325. Our PPE is a current, an annual cost to us. Our gear, firefighting turnout gear and helmets, gloves, you know, 10-year requirement on that from OSHA. So that has to get replaced for the members on a 10-year basis. And as because we did get so many new volunteers, that's actually gone up, you know, buying the new sets of gear as the firefighters finish their basic firefighting. So that's been a large cost on the capital side. Radio replacement, that is just our radios that the firefighters get issued as they get out of firefighter one and they get interior qualified. So that is to replace two to three radios for, and batteries for the firefighters. Tools and equipment is kind of a, not identified, but we're looking at that rescue, that rescue equipment, replacing airbags, lift bags. They're on a 15-year cycle. Our height, our, we can't really call them hydraulic tools, but our extrication tools, which used to be hydraulic or now now battery operated, as they come out of compliance and start to not, they can't cut cars that are being made now, then we start replacing those. So we have a schedule on an annual basis of a certain amount of tools that we're replacing in the in the rescue field and in some of the firefighting stuff also. So it's all small stuff that adds up to the to the 15,000 on an annual basis. The staff vehicle was put back into the budget when the the town, the finance, Board of Finance, put the assistant chief back in with some overtime reductions, so staff vehicle. I think it's a little bit high, but with outfitting with radios and a light package and lettering, it's going to be close to 80,000 once the the car is bought on contract and the equipment is put in there.
So that equipment for the car is not included in the other?
No, the car itself, that would be a radio, a light package, you know, for emergency lighting, so and so on. So that's what the the outfitting is for the car. It's kind of almost similar to what the police department does. Finishing out our water rescue, as I showed you, the boat that we purchased, some of that fast-moving water equipment, we do have to finish out what we asked for last year. A few more suits, different sizes for the the members to to wear when they're going into a fast-moving water environment or flood environment. Two things for the cancer reduction, a station exhaust system. We currently have an exhaust system. We want to upgrade our current system by putting magnetic clips for our apparatus. It'll be better, it'll stay on the apparatus the way it's supposed to. Right now, we have an old air compressor. We, the system itself has air leaks that develop throughout the course of the year. So they're not too bad to fix. The problem is the downtime before they could get fixed. So at that point is when we're, the exhaust goes into the apparatus bay, which ends in the living quarters of the firehouse, which is one of the cancer reduction things that the legislative is addressing. So, you know, it's, it'll take the whole air system out of the the exhaust system so we can magnetically put them on the fire apparatus and it should stay by magnet.
That's really cool.
What's that?
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, it's it's a good, you know, decent, decent system. And that that's for seven pieces apparatus that would get changed over. A gear washer, we'd like to get a second gear washer. Our current one is one set of gear at a time. It's a cancer reduction addition. It also, our downtime when we do have a fire or even a training event, the volunteers, mostly the volunteers are out of service while their gear's getting laundered down. Again, the cancer legislation doesn't want them to wear the contaminated gear. They're requiring firefighters' gear to get washed right after the incident. So they would break their gear down, it would sit there for a day while it waits in line to get washed and dried. So I would lose those members for the next couple of days. Our career staff is required to have two sets of gear, but I can, I wouldn't be able to afford that with volunteers. I mean, we could afford it, but I just don't think it's as good of a investment as the second washer where we could do multiple sets of gear at once, dry it, and there's only a couple of hours that they're, they have downtime in that case.
Is there any state funding for the cancer reduction measures that you?
No. No, sorry. But we, you know, some of the, some of this stuff, we we actually, for grants and stuff, we could reach out for this stuff, but this is really low-hanging fruit really for us. We're looking for a grant this year for SCBA, which I'll talk about in my five-year capital plan. And last thing is the search maze, which is, in addition to our training program, we do most of our training in-house. Actually, this week, we have what's called platoon night. All the volunteers are coming in Monday through Thursday, you know, a half a dozen of them each night to do specific hands-on training. So what the search maze would be is for us to actually do search drills, like if we're coming into a residential house, we can move hose around the the search maze itself. We could do firefighter evacuation techniques in there. So what it is, it's a a half wall, basically four foot high, that we could set up in different configurations and, you know, pack it up, put it in the corner and then reset it up on the apparatus floor on a regular basis. Right now, a lot of this stuff, we have to wait for vacancies. Like we just finished training on Carter Street, the house got knocked down today. But we did hose work and and search at that house. And now we got to wait for our next one to come up, which actually slowed down over the last year, unfortunately, that the houses aren't coming down and we're not getting to to use them as much in live training like this. But this this search maze would add to that training plan on a regular basis. Firefighters are required under ISO to, there's certain mandatory trainings, but ISO to get that 33Y rating, each firefighter needs 198 hours of training a year. That's what they, that's, that's, that's the bar. That's where we want to be, can't say we're there, but that's where we want to be. And it's things like this that make it more interesting to come into the firehouse on Tuesday night. You know, that that really helps, you know, doing the, doing stuff like the maze. So that's the, that's the FY '25 capital request. And here's my five-year plan. I, it's altered a little. It might have got changed by Josh over the last few weeks when I did it, but just me, no, meaning, meaning I changed, I changed, I made, I made numbers better. I don't know if he caught up to me, but so.
Josh.
Let me, let me put it that way. So I I don't know how, if I was on the same page from '26 on with Josh, because I did make some corrections on on some of the requests. But you, the big one is that next year, I asked for 410,000 for SCBA replacement. Our, you know, breathing apparatus, which is critical function for us, is coming up to 20 years. So myself and Greg Riley did just write the grant and we submitted it last week. So we'll know in September, hopefully, we're on the the hit list for the grant. Hopefully, if we secure that grant, then we're only going to have a 10% on that. So it'll be a little more than 10% for us because there's stuff the grant won't buy, they don't buy extra ones. So that 400,000 will probably go down by 75%. So for my true ask, if we get the grant next year, it'll probably be 100, 100,000 for the SCBA to make up the the 10% and the extra SCBA that we would have to buy for spares to have in the firehouse. They only, they only, the grant only, the government only gives you riding positions. They don't give spares, they don't give extra parts and things that on a regular basis that we would need. So that number would really significantly come down. And then you could see that the, looking at some appar, large apparatus repairs in the future, we're still, we're in, we just went out to bid for our current apparatus that we asked for last year, the funding. In, once that's done and that project is started, as far as building it, we're going to have some vendors look at the the ladder truck and the tanker truck to see what our best, what our best practice is going to be moving forward, if it's a refurb or early replacement and so on. So that's more to come on that, but it's, we just need to start looking at it for the, you know, four to five years out. That is my budget. I will take any questions that I wasn't clear on.
Just to clarify for the assistant chief position. So currently, you have an assistant chief that's a volunteer.
Correct.
Yourself. So this would be filling a position that you previously held before you were elevated to chief.
Right.
And then is there a requirement that a chief in some capacity be in the firehouse at all times?
Not in the firehouse, no, but, you know, I'm.
Or something?
Where we struggle is our comp, our captain, who's the shift commander 24/7, when they go to a significant event, they're riding the front of a fire truck. uh, when they go to a significant event, they're riding the front of a fire truck, which puts them in a working position. So when they, I lose one person to go inside, so I go quickly down to only two people inside, the captain and the um, a pump operator, the other apparatus is water supply. So getting one of us there on a, you know, on a reasonably quick basis at night is um, is critical for the taking command and dealing with everything else. We're so reliant on mutual aid coming in, somebody's gotta be talking to three, four other departments within the first five minutes of this. So having that chief officer that's, you know, makes those commands, this command presence, command decisions uh, is critical in a fire, in when something really, something like that happens. And you know, a lot with the ace, with the assistant chief, um, just the, working with the shift at times. You know, that was my role when I got there, focusing on training and operations and really developing that every day, doing stuff, you know. As a chief, you're doing all the department head things and trying to still go downstairs, you know, and of, you know, to get every four shifts on the same page and having that one person teach it. You know, you know, and kind of work with the shifts, you know, that takes, that's four hours a day, three hours a day out of, for me to do it and then come back and do everything else. So ha, ha, that was my job when I first got there for three months. And then, you know, when I was elevated, I didn't, I'm not getting on the floor as much, that's one of the big things. And a lot of administrative stuff that I'm trying to turf off, I only see my officers once a week. You know, they work on a Tuesday, I won't see them until next week on Wednesday because they work a weekend. So it's either a phone call to them uh, when they're off duty or me, you know, coming in and sitting down with them on a Saturday if they're working on a project, especially my apparatus officer, if I gotta talk to him on a Saturday, I come in and have that conversation with him while he's working because we gotta go over certain things that, okay, what's next? How are we gonna get this apparatus? So there's a lot involved um, with some of that where a lot of that administrative stuff can be done, you know, with that second person, that's one of the big things that's missing.
And that would reduce your overtime.
No, I'm gonna, well, it, not uh, right now, they're not asking, you know, I'm not, you know, every time I call them, I'm, they're really good, you know, and not asking for overtime, which is good. So they're really, they're happy about doing a lot of these projects. We're trying to elevate them to that level that they could take the next rank. Um, so they're not asking for that, but um, but I really need them. That's, that was one of the options that we talked about, was bringing them in on an overtime basis. I just, myself and the commission just didn't feel that asking for that much overtime from them when I can't, they still have to fill shifts.
Right.
So just like Chief De Federico said, it's everyone, the work-life balance. You know, I might get them for a little, like an hour or two, but they're not gonna give me four hours or eight hours a week if I need them for that and cover shifts also. So when they're on shift, they have to do shift stuff, that's the, the hard part. I can't take them away from training their young firefighters when they're there. They give me a couple hours, they do what they need to do and then, so that's, that's the challenge.
Are you still undecided as to whether it's going to be an in-department elevation versus an outside hire?
The um, the commission and myself, um, we're gonna go through an assessment center. So the original group of applicants, you know, that put in, um, the applications are sitting with HR, they're all gonna go through what's called an assessment center, which we're gonna run them through uh, an assistant chief's project, you know, whether it's budgeting, uh, it's a training event, you know, the testing company's going to come up with that assessment. So any one of our members that wanted to go through that and they can. Out of the, the requirements, only one out of the four officers that um, is eligible put in for it. So there's not a huge jump to jump into the administration. So that, that was another issue and I, you know, what we talked about is like, can we move it from within to get a, a lower paid firefighter in? There, there's not a lot of interest when you're on a twenty-four seven and you're so far away from, you know, the end of your career, they don't wanna do that. You really gotta have that passion for administration and, you know, they're not there yet. So that's the downside, but the, only four of them were eligible and only one put in based on the requirements at the commission and we came up with.
I like the phrase passion for administration.
What's that? It's not a passion fragment, you really gotta make.
You mean firefighters, people who wanna fight fires?
They wanna fight fires. It, it was, I mean, that was one of the hardest decision. When I went from a firefighter to a chief, I went into training back in two thousand fifteen in my old job and uh, that's a tough, you know, you gotta be ready for it and you're done, you're done crawling down hallways and, yeah. So you gotta make that decision.
Why is it only, it says funded for a full year, is that?
I should say the full year.
Okay.
Okay, yes. No, it won't be one year, it would hope, hopefully be continuous after that, um, but we, we agreed. Like in two thousand twenty-four, we did it for a half a year, you know, just, you know, to give us time to do the testing process and everything else. So we didn't wanna say, oh, get, let's do it for a full year and then have it ready for July one. We said, just start it in January, we'll start the process the end of the year and then start, and start it. And we got a little late start, we started in the end of October with sending out the uh, job announcement. So that's why we got a little delayed and then we put it on hold once the budget process started.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Good to go, chief, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move now forward, thank you for, Board of Education, your patience, floor is yours, Dr. Lutzi.
Oh, for the record, we've become administrators, we still crawl down hallways.
Your life is hallway.
He's just stepping out for a minute, take your time. Lost a couple, we've lost, why don't we take a little bit of a break?
Yeah, it's good, it's a good time for a brain break.
Yeah.
Yeah, sand, scratch.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna fill up my water.
Good. We'll get set up here.
Hi, good thanks, I'll leave you, here, I'm gonna give this to Penny, I'll take your next one. Thank you, everything good? All right, good.
And hard copy right there. And that, great. And then we'll, I thought we'd go through the presentation and then we'll go into the Q and A. And glad again to have any conversation that you'd like, any discussion about anything. I want to thank Hugo Alves, our Chairman of the Board of Education for his great support and guidance and advice as we've put this together and worked our way through the process. With us also tonight is Erica Schwedel, our Vice Chair. Lara Kelly's here as well. Our board members have been at many of these presentations and conversations and many of them are logging in from home now as well. I also want to say special thanks to Sean O'Keefe, who's our Director of Finance and Operations. The budget, of course, in that role falls under his department. And Pat Merron, who is our Budget Director, she joined us just in July and really was tasked with figuring out how this thing is built, putting it all together, working with everybody. What a great way for, to structure a crash course in learning about a district. Because as you know, and we'll talk about, the budget is not just an Excel spreadsheet. It really is, it's a resource plan based on your values, goals, and aspirations for your district. So, we'll get to that in a moment. I also want to say thank you to Dr. Corenti, our Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Tesber, our Assistant, Ms. Pianka, our Director of Human Resources, all of whom are intimately involved with all of this and are with us here tonight. And our principals as well, who are logged in from home. Mr. Cascac, it is his birthday today. Thank you, Matt. Along with Bill Egan at the high school, Dave Gussich over at the middle school, Jan Murphy over at West, and John Grasso, who's filling in for us at East for the remainder of the school year as we continue to search for our future principal over there at our wonderful elementary school. Now, it's a team effort. I could go on, I could spend the next 20 minutes listing the people that are involved with building this budget, but they know how grateful we are. We tell them as often as we can. So, let's get into the framework that we use as we put the budget together. We really do lead by our goals. We lead with our values and our beliefs about learning for children, our collective aspirations for, for our kids. The, the district has five overarching goals that have guided us for many years in the work that we do. And underneath these goals, we develop and revise and maintain indicators.
Whoops, whoops, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, like.
No, it was my fault.
That's okay, okay, all good. I'm going to reclaim my time. All right. All right, the goals that we have, you see them there, five overarching goals, and really they, they serve as our true north, as you've heard me talk about before. They really are, the goal number one is focused on student learning outcomes. It's our curriculum, our instruction, our assessment, well, the instructional core in our classrooms, which is that exchange between teacher, student, and content. Our other goals support that work primarily. It's their communication, their quality teaching, they are school, climate and safety, and it's good stewardship, all of which, again, are general enough to guide us. And annually, we develop and revise indicators underneath those and actions that become our district goals. We work on them, they're approved by the Board of Ed, and then they flow into our schools through our principals and others, and they become really a primary focus. Some of the results of these goals through the years and the work that we've been doing, many of you, all of you were invited, many of you were able to attend our Portrait of the Graduate sessions that we had just this fall. We had four sessions where over 125 community members came together each time to talk about our collective aspirations for our students as they moved through the grades. We had well over 50 students participating in the process. They were, they were there, they were engaged, and if you were, if you were able to experience it with us, you saw how we came together as a community focused on the most important work on the planet, which is working with children, helping them to realize their, their dreams and prepare them for what's ahead. Another example of the investment and the returns on the investment is the Dome Project, which we started in earnest a few years ago. This last year, we really kicked it into gear. The private fundraising was amazing, led by Sarah Schubert and others. We, it was about a 50-50 partnership with the town and the private fundraising. And the result of those efforts developed and put in place, really installed a brand-new experience for our kids that has gone from a dots-on-the-dome kind of experience to a fully immersive collective experience, really virtual reality experience for students and adults and others to have together. And then I think in a world where we are all driven to look at the small screen, to look down at our phones and to be sort of isolated and independent in what we do, creating a space like this for kids and others to be together, to collectively experience something that great and expansive, and to share that experience, to be able to talk about it and learn from it, really changes the, the game for kids, changes those, adds those experiences that would otherwise not be there. Even when you talk about virtual reality with goggles on, you're still talking about the end of the one person wearing a pair of goggles. This, the social collective nature of this is, is so vitally important. And I think as human beings, we learn through interaction, we learn socially, we learn together, and this creates this space that I think really is unparalleled. We are looking forward, about a month from now, we'll have our grand opening, you'll all be invited. And then we're also looking to see what other opportunities can we start to develop for the community and others to participate and to enjoy this investment and the return on investment. So, we're really excited. It's open already, kids are using it, we're running our classes. And again, we're continuing to find ways, think of ways to expand. And I've mentioned this before, I believe, one of the most exciting parts about the Dome is that not only will it show professional content and telescopes from around the world and pictures from the James Webb Telescope, all those things that are available, it'll also allow students to create their own content. So, whether it's in our video classes or our science classes, in our video production, whatever it might be, they can create their own films and movies, broadcast them on the Dome, bring their classmates in to experience what they've created. So, I think that is such, is such a powerful thing, really excited about what that's going to be. And that is, again, something that we invested in as a town, both through the town boards and individually through very generous donations. I also want to mention our athletics and some of the highlights. We, one of the, I think, most important highlight there is that over 70% of our kids are participating in one or more sport. And we do that very strategically and intentionally. It's, it's thanks in part to our All Sports Booster Club, who donates a significant amount, about 150,000, give or take, annually, to support additional coaches for our kids, both to lower the coach-to-student ratio, but also to make sure that we can offer expanded programs for any child, some varsity wants to participate. Of course, varsity is the most competitive and that's, yeah, those are going to be your best players.
Can I stop you right there, just on the, with respect to the coaching? Can you explain the structure and the compensation for the coaches, like, you know, like football or down the line? I just want to understand that and how it intersects with any collective bargaining agreement, I think.
Actually, it's in the collective bargaining agreement, right? So, it's leveled based on varsity, junior varsity, or freshman coaches, there's different levels for that. After, there's, there's, we're pretty careful around parity across the sports, whether it's, you know, boys or girls and different sports. So, they're, they're pretty equal across the board. And it is negotiated every three years in the teacher's contract for those, those levels. The, what happens is that we have our budgeted amount for the coaches. And, you know, that's sort of the core program. But then the donations from the All Sports Booster Club that come in, they don't pay those coaches more, they allow us to hire more coaches using the same salary chart. So, those volunteer coaches or those that are funded by the All Sports Booster Club are paid using that same chart so that there's parity across that town.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. So, I do want to mention, only because it just happened, our boys hockey team tonight, congratulations to them. Unfortunately, they fell a little short tonight. They were on the quest for their first state championship in 52 years for boys hockey. They were up at Quinnipiac and Notre Dame just bested them 4-1. They fought, it was great. If I looked a little distracted back there, that's why. But what a wonderful season, congratulations to them and the coach, and, you know, they'll be back, but, you know, keeping up the fight. But our sports, our athletic teams have great, great success, in part because of the investments that we continue to make in our, in our coaching, in our facilities, in our, what we're able to offer them, the instruction that we provide, the work that happens outside of season, thanks to the town and groups that are running different camps and things for students. They really are engaged. When you have over 70% of your students in one or more program, one or more sport, you really are at a level that very, very few can accomplish. And it's, it helps build that school spirit, and I think it's very reflective of the town, again, the investment that we make. Similarly, with our visual and performing arts. Every year, there's individual and group awards for art, for music, band, chorus, orchestra, for theater, for now video production, which is also in our VPA program that we teach during, you know, during the year. Just amazing, amazing outcomes for kids. And if you didn't have a chance to see The Drowsy Chaperone this past weekend, it was a fabulous show. They could, they really, really did a wonderful job. And Saks is putting out another show this weekend. So, very active, amazing, active program. And our kids will participate in adjudicated competitions in music, in theater, and others, and continue, without running through the, the long list of accolades and awards and things they've won, they really, truly, they're traveling all over the place, they're going, they're being invited to participate in regional choirs, regional orchestras. Our choir sang at Radio City to open up one of the Rocket shows just this past season. You know, they really are very engaged in having just world-class experiences in our visual performing arts as well, thanks to the investment that we continue to make. Another investment that continues to benefit our kids is the investment in opportunities for kids, in our clubs and activities, our extracurricular program that we have. We are a place where if a student has an idea for something, all they have to do is find an advisor and they can put a club together and just start doing it. We, our, our teachers are invested in our kids. And why this is so important is we know that students who are engaged in school beyond the academic classroom, whether it's through our VPA, through sports, through extracurriculars, through others, we know that they have a more positive experience through school, they have better life outcomes, they perform, they do get better grades, they are more socially successful and involved. All of the indicators that you would want are positive, driven from engagement in the school, membership and participation in the school community outside of the academic classroom. And so, we really work very hard to make sure there's an entry point for every single student to be, feel a part of our school community, not just when they're in the classroom, but when they're in all of these other activities that we provide. A great example of, of investment around this, because most of this is free, we're not paying someone to be the advisor for a Quidditch club or something like that. But we did make an investment years ago in, in our Model UN program. So, we made a decision to structure our Model UN similar to a sport. And we said, we're going to have varsity coaches, JV coaches, we're going to have JV team and a varsity team and have them work through the grades. And what's resulted from that has been an amazing experience for kids. We have now a sophomore simulation that we've had for a number of years where every sophomore spends a day in a Model UN-type experience all day long, run by the seniors and juniors who've been in the club as they've gone through. And so, they've run this experience for kids where they are negotiating and learning and drafting and doing all of these things in a historical context. This year, we were the only private school in the country invited to participate in the Hague, which is their, the international Model UN program. So, we had 13 kids go over to the Hague, be a part of that. So, now they're negotiating with kids from all over the world around issues or items, topics that are contemporary and, and difficult, right? So, and our kids always perform admirably as they're doing that. So, really great experience. And now we even have a middle school team, so we have a feeder program in the middle school that runs up into the high school. And so, that's where an, an investment, a long-term vision turns into a, a great, great opportunities for our kids. Of course, we're first and foremost an academic institution, so we want to just very quickly go through our outcomes around the Smarter Balance assessments. These are last year's assessments, they're given in the spring of each year. The Smarter Balance assesses English Language Arts and Mathematics in grades three through eight. So, when we look at the outcomes here, these are, DIRG is a demographic reference group, and though, these are the towns that are considered in our DIRG. We are considered DIRG A. So, generally, when you're at the top of DIRG A, you're going to be at the top of the state for the most part. And that has been the case for the last number of years for us, for being both. So, when you aggregate the scores, look at our outcomes, you see that we are the top of our DIRG and state last year in both.
So, these are great numbers. What, what do we do for the 16.7% or 18% of kids that are not meeting or exceeding the goals?
Sure. So, last night, Dr. Corenti did a presentation on what we call Response to Intervention.
Okay.
Right? And really, it's all about a system of identifying areas for student growth and opportunity and putting tier one, two, three structures in place to support those students and get them back on track. So, we are, we have data teams that meet regularly, our teachers, our coordinators, others. We're all constantly looking at the data, making decisions around that based on formative assessments we give and other things. It's, it's a presentation in and of itself, glad to.
I haven't had a chance to watch it, but I'm trying to watch.
Oh, yeah, every single, every single child, you know, we look at and we do. And one of the actually advantages now, they've, now the turnaround time on the assessment has been shortened. It used to be that we'd give these summative assessments and we'd get the results months later, we'd get them in the fall. So, you give them the spring, you don't get the results till the fall, and this sort of little, you know, detached in time from those kids in the class and the teacher. Now, they're turning them around in a couple of weeks.
Amazing.
So, this year, we're looking forward to being able to get those data back, sit with those teachers and the kids that are still right in front of them, and even start to develop some plans right there, so.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, if we drill into it a little bit further on the next page, so those were the aggregate scores. If we look at them by grade, and again, but I can spend an awful long time going through all of this, but I'm going to leave it with you and glad to answer any questions. But you see our performance in relation in the grades across the schools that are right around us. And we're at the top or near the top in every, every single one of the grades, you know, as you go across. And the same can be said for our mathematics on the next slide. Again, you know, you see, these are the, this is the percentage of students who meet or exceed the goal, right? So, and again, mathematics and English Language Arts, and our kids continue to perform very, very well. If we look at the, on the next slide, you'll see it's our longitudinal look at the all-in numbers. Again, we look at it at every grade level, across the years, we drill into gender, we drill into all kinds of different pieces, this isn't the format, forum for that. But we always do present and share this information with the Board of Ed, typically in October, and always glad to share that with the, with the Town Council as well. But you see the trends from 2016 up to 2023. We are, you see where we were pre-pandemic in 2019, there's a gap in 2020, there were no assessments in 2020, remember, that's when we were shut down. And then picking it back up for us here. So, you see those, those trends. And, you know, we continue to do good work to get our students where we think they should be. And of course, our goal is always 100%. We want every single student to be meeting or exceeding goal.
As we were killing it in 2019.
We were killing it, no doubt, we were, we were. Yep, and we'll get, we, we're still killing it, by the way. These numbers are top.
No, these numbers are.
These numbers are the top in the, in the DIRG and the state.
They're phenomenal.
Every one of these years.
Yeah, and when you compare it to schools that were closed longer, I mean, there was a New York Times article that was just released about the length of time for closures, and we were, you know, if not the first, one of the first to reopen. So, I think that that's super critical, and these numbers are impressive no matter what.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah.
But yeah, we, we're getting back on track with all that. And that's actually some of what we, we'll get there in a moment when we talk about budgets and positions and things and investments that we're looking to make. I do want to take a minute on this slide, I think there's a lot of information here that's really worth sharing. I love this, this visualization of the data, so I'm just going to take you through very quickly. It starts in 2010, and you see the, the bar and the shaded bar in the background, that's our total student population. So, in 2010, we had 1,282 students. And just using 2010 as our starting point, the green line across the bottom is the percentage of students scoring a three or better on AP exam. And a three or better is considered college-level performance, the, in general, college credit, so passing grade in a college-level course. The blue line above that is the number of, of test takers, number of students who took one or more tests. And then the red above that, 497, is the number of total tests. So, in 2010, we had 275 students who took a total of 497 tests, and 92% scored three or better. And we had 1,282 students. So, now, as you trend that to the right, you see the red line going up, you see the blue line going up, the green line is gradually going up, and our enrollment is staying relatively flat. So, what you're seeing is the expansion of the program, the investments that we've been making in that program, the, the opportunities we've been giving to our kids have all resulted in an increase in the number of students who take, take tests, a significant increase in the number of tests that are being taken, and a slight increase in the outcomes.
Right, we have a question, Rita?
Hi, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I was waiting for you to finish this before I would ask the question, I think this is great. I'm curious about, have we ever considered doing an international baccalaureate program?
We've had some discussion about it. I, we think, we've really invested pretty heavily in our Advanced Placement Program at this point. So, I don't, I don't think that there, there hasn't been much traction or momentum around that, but.
Like, schools have, I mean, I know of schools have both, and it's a, it's a completely different sort of track, so I was just curious if that was something that was being considered.
We've looked at it. It's not, it's not on the table at this point, but it certainly could be looked at.
Thanks.
Okay.
Do students pay for their own AP tests, or does the school?
They do, unless there's a need, and then the school can pick it up.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep, they do. Yep. So, I think this really is a, a powerful story about the work that we've been doing. Again, we talk about expanding the program and going from the core AP classes to classes in AP Psychology, AP Environmental Science, AP Economics, others that attract more students and then give more students an opportunity to do college-level work while they're still in high school, so. So, continuing the pace, the, I want to take a moment to share some external recognition we received as well. NISH looks at school districts across the country, looks at schools in our state, schools in our region, and as you may imagine, our schools performed very well by comparison. We're ranked number one public, best public high school, middle, our five, three elementary schools are in the top five across the state, number two best places to teach, two best teachers in, in the state, and number four out of 119 for school districts athletics. So, that's all within the state, but I think really, truly amazing is the national recognition as well, where when you're talking about 11,000 districts being reviewed, number 48 for best school district in America out of almost 11,000 districts.
Oh, isn't it somebody in the.
We're got there. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. No, 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 no.
It's not a fairytale.
No, 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 no. It may be, so, it's a couple of schools out in Illinois.
Yeah.
I would just, wouldn't say it without looking it up, so. Fair enough, yep.
We don't clutter our mind.
No, we think of this more like golf, we want to continue to improve our ranking and, yeah, yeah, I'll take it, out of 11,000. No, 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 I'll take it, I'll take it. And again, 31 out of about 11,500 for best teachers in America, 56 out of 11,2800 best places to teach. And I, I like that those two metrics are very tight, because it shows that, that positive relationship between the district and the teachers and the development we're doing and their commitment to the schools and all of those things working together in all the right ways. And then, of course, number 35 out of 10,300 for best school districts for student athletes, which really is, is quite noteworthy when you think about the whole student athletes across the country in some states that are very different in their rules and eligibility rules and everything else, in Connecticut, which is typically one of the strictest in the country, right? So, so at this point, you hopefully are thinking, boy, this must be really expensive. So, it is, but by comparison, we're doing pretty well there too. I want this chart for a moment. Again, we're looking at our DIRG, and we start, what this does is rank from the top down on net current expenditures per pupil, NCEP. And then the rank across the state, there are 166 districts in the state, and that's where they fall. And then on the far right, you'll see the ANGLIC, which is Adjusted Equalized Net Grand List Per Capital. Not bad, I didn't look at the notes.
Say that three times, but.
So, nothing. But, so, that's, that's your town welfare, right? So, when we look at this, you look at your, this is your net current expenditures, and this is all normalized at the state based on the filings that we do. Because this is the number that is used to calculate the amount for your excess cost grant reimbursement from the state, which is the money that comes back to the district or the town for high-cost special education students that are above 4.5 times your per pupil, right? So, there's a lot that rides on this number, so it is very carefully normalized and scrutinized prior to being published. And so, we feel pretty confident, you know, putting these numbers forward. Sometimes people ask about capital or about this or about that, and that, we can have those conversations, but I'm not going to put those numbers forward because they're not normalized in the same way, they're not scrutinized like that. These are. So, when we look across the DIRG and we look at what our spending is, we are 44th in the state in our per pupil expenditures. We are, and you see where we fall in the DIRG. So, you say, well, okay, so, difference between us and Greenwich is only, you know, $3,000, $3,600 per student, not that much. But if you actually extrapolate that across our students, that would mean that this year's budget would have an additional $15.3 million, as we looked at, there's just this year's budget in it right now, to run at that level. Over at Weston, or I mean, at West, in Westport, we'd be looking at 7.5 million more in this year's budget. In Darien, it's 4.3 million, and even in Wilton, it's 1.2. I didn't do like Weston or Joe Barley, because those are smaller districts and it's, it's a different economy of scale. So, it does, the way this metric works, it does push up smallest districts tend to be at the highest, the highest per pupil. So, some of the smallest districts in Connecticut might run at $55,000 per pupil, and there's a band of them in the front. And of course, you can imagine they're, every year, they're pushing for legislation that changes the excess cost grant reimbursement rate or formula, because four and a half times $55,000, you know, it's, it's quite a burden for those districts. For us, we're of course incentivized where we are to try to keep this number down as much we can, because the way that grant works is, and it's money that's above the four and a half times that's eligible for reimbursement, and then there's a formula that runs through, we're not at 100% yet, where we push every year to get to 100% reimbursement on that. Right now, we're at about 68 to 70%, depending upon the funding at the state level. But the, I think it's noteworthy that there are 43 districts in the state that spend more per pupil than we do, and there aren't any that get better results.
And remember, this is a budget presentation for us, right?
That's right, that's right. So, let's get there.
With a 6% increase.
Which will still keep us below all of those districts when we talk about, okay, so. Context. So, how do we, how do we do it? Well, we are, we do consider our, one of our primary responsibilities to be excellent stewards of the town's resources. That's financial, that's facility, that's all the resources across the town. Some of the things that we've done, we're very proud of, because not, not just cost-saving opportunities, but really environmentally friendly ones. Things like the natural gas that we have at the four of the buildings, we have propane now running over at West, we just started that up. So, instead of burning diesel over there now, we're now running propane. 100% of our bus fleet has been running on propane for a good number of years. I haven't had a single complaint about somebody being behind a bus at a stoplight with the exhaust in a long time, it's a nice thing, we used to get complaints about that. But there's also benefits to it because it burns so clean, the engines don't have the same wear that the engines had in the past. So, when we went to renegotiate our contract with DATCO, we were able to negotiate a 2% increase year to year because we didn't have to replace the fleet because the engines are as clean as they are, they're going to get, have a longer life. So, that, we didn't anticipate that when we first put this program in, but it's one of those downstream benefits to the decision that is benefiting us financially as we look at everything. We also have the combined heat and power over Saks, the LED lighting, we've talked about that, how, where, with about a million square feet, a little bit below a million square feet, when you pull out all of your incandescent lights and you swap all of those out with LEDs, at home, you might save a couple bucks a year, here, we save about a quarter million dollars a year. It's a really significant difference because there's so much, so much space and so many lights. So, just something like that can really make a big difference, and we've invested in all of those ways. As a result, we took a look at electricity and heating fuel, just as a quick, for instance. You can see that, I don't know if anyone at home or anyone even professionally that has been flat since 2018 in their costs around electricity and, and oil. But yet, as a district, we've trended down in our, in our heating fuel and stayed consistent, if not trended down a little bit, in our electricity use. Now, there is a spike in '22 because we had windows open, we had to heat more, we had to run this, run the fans and do other things, running the vents because of the, the return. But we, you can really see that we've been managing it very tightly, because we do believe we have to balance effectiveness with efficiency. We also work really hard to drive down costs in the operations in order to protect the investments in the classrooms. So, that's where we're talking about buses and heating fuel and, you know, all of these, electricity, all of these other things, because that helps protect the investment that we need to make in the classroom for the kids and the teachers and the work that's most important. And another thing that we've done that's helped us is develop new programs, right? So, our launch program has been around now for about 12 years or so. Our downtown campus is continuing to thrive and has our students in there that are what, you know, doing, doing very well, taught by our high school faculty. And we've started our literacy academy in the last couple of years, and we're looking to continue that investment this year as well with our youngest students in our kindergarten, first, second, third grade, and helping those students who are struggling to learn to read. So, the budget proposal really looks at, it balances the high expectations of the community with the best efficiency and strategic decisions around the budget to make sure that our, the experience that our students get in our schools and around our schools are world-class and second to none. You can see that we continue to invest in our high-leverage improvement initiatives, focus on curricular instructional and assessment practices, safety and security is always in the forefront, and looking where their students need the investment the most. So, some, this, this page, this is a horrible slide, it just is. I don't expect anyone to get much out of this, other than to see, the way that the budget is organized, there are eight large objects that, and this is the way. There are eight large objects that, and this is the way the statute reads, eight R objects, salaries, benefits, contracted services, property services, purchase services, supplies, equipment and other. And those are the eight large buckets that everything goes in. And then from there, we go level deeper and a level deeper and level, level deeper. All the way down to each individual, you know, dollar that comes out of each of the individual things. So the budget itself is well over 800 line items as you go into it, but this is how we categorize all of it. This does not reflect the most recent changes from the Board of Finance. Because you know, the budget now is in, in process. This actually reflects that, that change from the Board of Finance. So where the budget is today and the Board of Finance adjustments to the budget. These are just recommendations or just, you know, possible, possibilities until the decision is made by the Board of Education. Because as you know, the Board of Ed budget is a single appropriation that then is distributed by the Board of Education into each of the line items and things. But the request was for a reduction of around $500,000 in the operating. So that reduction is there. And then there was the addition of a social worker over at Saks with the Kids in Crisis conversation. We spoke about that quite a bit at the, at the committee meeting. So these are the numbers. We're currently at 6.17%, which as you can see here is truly driven by the, the insurance, the Internal Services Fund. More than, you know, more than any other individual item and we can go into detail about that.
Are we going to go into detail about how you got, I'm mostly curious about the 182,000 that you were able to cut from other operating expenses. I understand that ISF cut, that makes sense.
Sure. Well, and I, at a high level, I can tell you, it's, when we built the budget, we, we didn't know what our retirees would look like. And we'd anticipated two to three perhaps, we're up to eight. So we're able to find more savings there. Thanks to that. We typically see about a $32,000 or so savings with, with turnover. So getting them to eight allowed us to find a little bit more there.
Great.
So that's the biggest driver.
Biggest driver. Okay.
Yep. And Rita.
Rita has her hand up.
Hey, just, yeah, really quick question. I know we were at one point talking about apples to apples. Are we looking at apples to apples in this percentage difference? Meaning, I remember last year, there was timing in terms of when you were, the budget was sort of executed. And so there was a concern that we wouldn't be looking at apples to apple, like the same percentage differences from year to year and that it would be exaggerated this year?
Are you speaking specifically to the ISF or to the overall budget or?
Well, that was, that was the main, that was the main driver.
I think what you're, what you're, I think what you're referring to perhaps is the fact that our plan year on the ISF doesn't align with our budget year.
Yes. Thank you.
So this, yep, so our plan year for our insurance plan runs September 1 to August 30. But our budget year, of course, is July 1 to June 30. So this is our budget, this is the number based on, you know, our work with Joe. And this does work with the projections that we have and keeps us at an 8% reserve level. Keeps our IBNR, which is about 10%, which is what the auditors like to see. And, and has the projection that Joe has developed based on some of the most recent info. So I'll get to that in a little bit, but yes, this is, this is the budgeted amount that's needed to fund that, fund our insurance plan.
And at the same, the same timing.
Well, the timing is still different, but the funding, it works without, and that's, yeah. It works year to year. Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Okay, so again, just very quickly, this is just a visual graphic of the breakdown of where the funding goes. You'll, you can see that the vast majority is with salaries and benefits. And then the breakdown across some of the others is about 82% or so salaries and benefits. And then purchase services, which is the next largest, that's transportation and out of district placements, the other, other two very large drivers. Property services typically are the utilities and that's about 96% of the overall budget. Another way to look at it is to look at where it's distributed across the district. So where's the money going? What you look for here, what we do is sort of parity across the elementaries, Saks and the high school, both with four grades. This pulls out VPA and athletics and other things and you can see those there. Special education at the bottom and then pupil services, technology, others. So this is, and then this pulls benefits out as one lump sum and, which makes sense as, as, you know, for us to, as we look and analyze it. But we see the things that we look for here in a positive way. This breaks down just a little bit more to get to the 6.17. Only because again, that first page with everything there didn't, didn't quite get to the number that we're working with. Overall BOF reduction was 432, I'm sorry. But the, I'm going to go back. There we go. These drivers, salaries, benefits, out placements, transportation and utilities are about 97% of the overall budget. And then everything else, the 3% is kind of textbooks and everything else that sort of fits underneath there.
Is the outplacement number increased because you anticipate more out placements? Or is it an increase in fees for sort of an existing?
It's both. It's both. Those tend to trend, tend to trend at five or more percent per year.
Okay.
Because of existing outplacements. And then folks, if you have people move into the district, if a student's been outplaced by another district and that family moves into the district. We're, we pick up the cost of that outplacement, even though the decision was made by their former district.
Okay.
And then we, you know, we talk with them, we go, we visit, we meet and see if we have an appropriate placement or not make those decisions. But we've had a couple of those cases this year. And, and so we're, you know, it's sort of, you're building on the, you know, your numbers, you know, your actuals. You know those that may be kind of aging out. You also know those that may be, you know, coming in and you anticipate a couple here and there. One of the drivers of that cost is the change in, in the law around students who are eligible to participate in our launch program. So it was, a few years ago, it was when students turned 21, they were no longer eligible. You know, and they would graduate at that point. And then they said it'll be the end of the year in which they turn 21. And then it became when they turned 22, they would then age out of the program and they would leave. And then just this year, it became, it's the end of the school year in which they turn 22. Right? So we had, for instance, we had a student turn 22 in August, July or August. That student's eligible to be with us this school year, which is great. I mean, we want them. We want the student as, it's such a great experience, he's great kids. You know, our program is fabulous and excellent and better than I think any other, you know, experience they're going to. But it costs money. So there's probably about $330,000 or so associated with that one change in, in this.
And that's in the outplacement number?
Yeah.
Okay, so launch.
Well, those are in the special, the high cost.
Yeah, yeah.
Program, all those things. Yeah.
Okay.
In those special education numbers. So yes, it's those, it's known and then you also have to anticipate a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. Can't talk budget without talking enrollment because it really is what drives our staffing numbers across the board. Very quickly again, 20, the one on the far left is our existing 23, 24. 24, 25 is the projection into next year and you can see the trend over 10 years. Now, I'll always caution you about a 10-year projection. They're very difficult to make and the toughest year is the most important year, which is the kindergarten year because that then sort of drives everything else. But NESDAG does have us projected to go up about 100 students in 26, 27. And they're really placing those students in kindergarten, right? And then you see the trend that goes from there. We'll get to that when we do the Q and A a little bit. The, another way to look at this, so that's the, that's the all in aggregate, but really our schools don't work that way. So you want to pull out your K4, five through eight, nine through 12. And so what happens, of course, your enrollment increases or decreases, but for us, it generally increases, begin in the elementary and work their way through the grades. So you see, excuse me, in the short term and starting in 26, 27, you see that top green, that's our elementary. And of course, elementary is larger because it's five grade levels, K through four, where the others are just four. And you see that starts to go, and then, you know, five years later, Saks picks that up and starts to, to move that way. And then it's the high school there in the bottom that's picking up where Saks was four years earlier. So there's just that, you know, that trend that rolls. But when we look at our elementary numbers, we see the, an upward, an expectation of an upward trend, given the live births that we're seeing for folks who live in New Canaan. We could sound bad. So to break it out, looking at our K8 classroom sections, I know the staffing was an area of interest for the town council. So this slide here, it shows you really just K8 enrollment across the top for next year and then our staffing numbers. So you see east is across the board at six, south is up and down a little bit. So five, five, they're going to add one in second grade, five in third, five in fourth, and west is five across the board. What's important to note about west and just again, very quickly around the facilities. We've been, we've said in the past, generally, our buildings are designed to run at generally 28 sections is where they're at sort of max capacity. Without having to reduce science classrooms and split other rooms or whatever. West has the preschool and as you'll see, because of another change in legislation, we have to add a section of preschool next year. So we're going to five preschool classes. So that puts west at 30 sections. East is running next year at 30 sections. South is a little bit smaller. So the facility question is something, again, we'll loop back to that, it's in the questions, but I just wanted to give you that context so that you understand why this is of growing importance for us. And it's, you know, we've had the question around, well, are we going to talk about where school, where students are distributed to go? But it's probably, you know, if you have got three cups and they're all full, there's nowhere to put the water. So we're going to have to, we're thinking about some other options. Yes.
So is this coming into the State Department of Education's goal of having mandatory preschool?
Now, this change is, actually, it's interesting, it's a kindergarten change that's impacting our preschool. So they moved the age of eligibility for preschool, for kindergarten from December 31st to born on or before September 1st. So we have students in our existing pre-K program now that are no longer eligible to go to kindergarten, but need services from us. So that is driving, it's seven, eight kids, so we need to open up a new section of pre-K. Because our pre-K, the way that it works is it's generally 50% students who receive special education services. And 50% what they call typicals, who are kids that could be in any preschool and they choose to be in ours with these guys. So they're together that way in the class. So if we have seven students who are, who need additional services, that becomes a class of 14, 15, 16 kids and that's a full section.
So has the state backed off of their, it used to be number one objective to have mandatory three and fours.
They haven't backed off of it yet. Beth By was testifying about that just last week. And they continue to have, it's the funding, of course, and where that funding flows from and where it comes from. You know, for us, for me, while I think it's a laudable goal, I don't want to see the funding come from K12. Yeah, so it's, they've, how they decide to fund that around pre-K, they, they still haven't solved that, that problem. They are looking at certifications and they've made some changes to certifications. So that more pre-K certs can, more people can have the pre-K certification in order to teach, you know, in district schools and things like that. So they are, they're, I think, nibbling around the edges, but they need to figure out where the investment's going to come from.
Because it's a dramatic impact on facilities and what do you do with the local three and fours programs?
Exactly.
All that sort of stuff.
Our program is intent, is expected to run at about 65 students or more next year and, and to continue to grow. Because our births have increased in that 26, 27 school year, go back five years from there. And, you know, 2020, 2021, we jumped from about 130, 140 births to about 200 births. And we do that pretty consistently. And those are known births from students, from families and individuals who live in New Canaan. So if the births, births are going up that much and then you still have the in-migration, there's going to be an expanded need for pre-K. Yeah, so. Yeah, we learn, we cover a lot of ground in these conversations, don't we? All right. From AP to pre-K to everything in between. All right. So bottom line this, look across the bottom there, the average class size is when we just, when we look at what we're projected to do. All in, it's a plus, is it a plus one? Yeah, all in is a plus one across the K8 because we're going down a couple over at south. We're going down, we're adding one, going down two, and then adding the two due to the enrollment over at Saks. So in this budget, what is the budget support around investments in our staffing? There's a challenge this year because we've been using COVID era grants. They were, we all, we always knew they were going to expire and this is the year that they roll off. So we have some staff that we have hired through the grant and then we have some new staffing needs too. So it's, it's interesting, when you look at the staffing plan, it doesn't match up with the numbers we're going to talk about. Because the positions that we've been funding through grants have been in the staffing plan. Because that's our all in staff when you look at it. That's everybody, supported by grants, supported by budget, otherwise. So there's some of those positions that we're keeping, there's some that we're not. And then there's some of the new positions as well that are driven from a couple of different needs. So you look at, so we talked, the pre-K, we explained that, that one already. The math coach is, there were lots of questions around the math coach and we went into, I think, some pretty good detail in the Q and A. Glad to talk about it further. We'll get there in a little bit. The, the reading specialist is, it's a .1, right? So we think of full-time equivalency 1.0 is a full-time teacher. And that, so this is half of a day and it just is really in response to the, the larger enrollment over at east. Right? So east is running at about 570, 580 students next year, where south is a little bit below 500. So just in response to some of that. The grade five classroom, grade five is going up, you saw the, the numbers before, so that keeps them in balance. And then we have to add specials when we do that because when you have additional sections, they have to have teachers for PE, for music, whatever it is, so that they have somewhere to go for that. There is new legislation for the high school level around financial literacy. All students, starting with this freshman class, have to have a .5 credit in financial literacy. A lot of our, our classes already cover some of that. So we're in pretty good shape, about 30% or so of our students, 35% don't take a class that would, would meet that need. So we have to develop some programming around that and that's what that is for. The .4 world languages is again, students enrollment patterns, things in order to. World language is one of the hardest departments to sort of manage and lead because it's not a department. It's multiple departments under one header because you've got, if you're certified in Spanish, that doesn't mean you can teach, can't teach Latin, can't teach French, can't teach Mandarin. So you, you have these silos within this bigger department. And so this gives us a little bit more flexibility to make sure that we can keep those classes running where they need to run for our kids. There's an additional guidance counselor for the school, for the high school. That will be, would add it to our complement there, given the, the changing nature of that role and the needs for the counselor and the kids. We have an assistant athletic director here, which again, due to changing expectations, both from the community, from the kids, from others. We, we look across our region, across the FCIAC and others, we're one of the few that don't have a position like this to support the athletic director. Again, even tonight, you know, Jay is in Quinnipiac, right, at the, at the event. He was at the event last week, he was at the one over the weekend. He is, he's at all of these events and one of the, the great things about our athletic program is our kids are so successful. That they compete in the postseason, most sports, most years. Which also means that our seasons keep going and going and going and going. And we need some extra support there. From the grants, these are positions that are already in, they already exist. We have an outreach social worker, this is someone who's K12, who's really reaching out to our students and families who need it most. Most in need of support and developing relationships with them in order to make sure they stay connected to the school, can access the resources that they need. I mentioned the literacy academy before, that's our elementary initiative. That is the science of reading driven through, or in Gillingham and other programming. The reading specialist over at Saks, again, the person's in that position right now. And that is in response to needs that have surfaced for our kids. And then the social worker here, again, there's somebody in that role right now that was out of the budget when we believed the Kids in Crisis Council was in the town's budget. When we got in discussion with that, we made the decision that our in-house social worker is a better model for our kids and for what our needs are. So when we look at the bottom right, it's a net 6.7 new positions. Don't, don't do the math because it also includes those reductions over at south and, you know, puts and takes across the board. But the total new positions net are 6.7, moving over from the grants. So ones that are already in the, they're filled, they're operating, we're paid through the grant, we're going to move over to 3.4 and that gets us to the 10.1.
How many grade five teachers do we have now?
We have 14.
And is it, by adding the two to anticipating a, I guess, a population boom. Is there a state mandated maximum per classroom or is that something we're trying to achieve and maintain?
It's, it's something we work to achieve and maintain. We have our, our Board of Education approved class size guidelines. And we work to stay within there. That Saks, as you know, uses a teaming model.
Yeah.
So six, seven, eight, there are four teams of four teachers. Right? So there's 16 teachers and they, they're the core and then they go off for world language and other classes. Fifth is a little different and so there will be, in this budget, there'll be eight teams of two teachers. And so we, we couldn't add one because they work in teams of two. But if we go back to here, you see, we do have a bit of a bump, we're going up to 352 kids. So at 16 sections, that gives us an average of 22 kids per class as we look across. Now, what happens at Saks, because of the teaming model, there are times that you may be. be slightly below the class-size guidelines because of, you may have a down year, but the next year, and the way our enrollment has gone, has been sort of up and down, but the team is meant to flex up or down, right? So if we had, if we had four hundred kids coming into, say, fifth grade, we're not adding two teachers necessarily, we're going to absorb that in those four-by-four teams and spread it across. So the teams are meant to, the way they're structured, to sort of work within a range of kids that way. If we had a significant drop, then you could have a team come, you know, remove a team. But to keep that teaming model and the, the way that it's structured, four-by-four, you have that little bit, that variability that comes.
Okay.
At the fifth grade, we have more flexibility with the teams of two. And so when, when it was two ninety-four or so, we only had the sixteen. But now that we're jumping up to three fifty-two, we're going to, I mean, we only have fourteen, now we're going back up to sixteen. Makes sense?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Can you also, can you just explain a little bit more about that additional guidance counselor at New Canaan High School?
Sure. So, in talking with our, with our counselors, with our parents, with others, the, the college landscape has become increasingly complex for kids and families to navigate. And we first, of course, that's not all that school counselors do, but that's probably the most public-facing part of the role. In the Q and A, I actually included what's called TEPL, we, we have our Teacher Evaluation and Professional Learning Plan, and we created different continuums of practice for, frameworks of practice for each of our areas, not just classroom teachers, but our counselors and others, so you can see there sort of how expansive the role is. But really, I think what drove it the most was the, the increasing complexity of that college landscape and those, the relationships that are required.
So it wasn't, it wasn't the number of kids per counselor that you were continuing?
Well, so it definitely, it helps with that, a significant amount, it does. And there are other responsibilities that have been added to the school counseling department, like we mentioned, the AP testing, the SAT testing, those things. If, for students who might need accommodations through the College Board, through special education, other things, it's the counselors that run all of that, and that, it didn't used to be the case, but now it is. So there's some of those other responsibilities that they have. But really, again, I think that it, it is about that, that college experience that starts, you know, sophomore year or so, they're having conversations, junior years, when the visits and things are happening, and then the applications after that. So by bringing down the ratio of students to counselor, it helps the counselors to get to know the students better, to be able to write a more targeted and specific letter of recommendation for the child, be able to guide them a little bit better, and, and just because the better they know them, the meetings they have with the students, with the parents, and with others. It's a tough role for our counselors. Susan Lency, who I adore, she retired a few years ago, she used to always introduce herself as Susan Lency, your guidance counselor, and killer of dreams. Because it just, you know, it's, it's a tough spot, because they are really trying, working hard to make sure they're giving the right guidance to, to kids and families as they're going through. So it really is, bringing that ratio down is about establishing those trusting relationships that we know will benefit our kids.
Okay.
Sure. Rita?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi, Dr. Lency. So my, and I'm very familiar with this, as my son is working with his guidance counselor and picking, you know, deciding his future. And so I'm, he's a sophomore, he's going to be in this position with schools, but I'm just curious, I think someone asked it, but I don't know if he answered it, so how many kids are, like, per guidance counselor right now, and how many will be, like, what's the change, and what is it now?
I think I put the exact number in the Q and A, but I believe it's, I believe this puts us at about a hundred forty.
It's a hundred and forty in your, in your.
Yeah, if I remember.
Per, per, per guidance counselor?
Not bad for, not bad for nine o'clock.
No, that's, that's not the number of students that each guidance counselor is seeing on a regular basis, is it?
That's the number of students that, yes, sure.
That's the number of students in the high school divided by the number of guidance counselors?
Exactly.
Okay, so not every student in the high school is using a guidance counselor.
Oh, yeah, they are.
They all do.
Every student in any, any given year?
But with college placement.
Well, also for course selection, you know, so like our eighth graders.
That's what my son has been doing for the last two years, but that's only, it's only been course selection, yeah.
Yep, they'll, they'll go there for, so when students build their schedules, from eighth grade and they go into ninth, they'll meet with their counselor, one-on-one, they'll talk about their program, they put in place, you know, an academic plan to follow, and then they'll adjust that along the way. If a student is struggling in any, any course or any subject, the counselors will often be the first to flag it, they'll circle back to the teacher, they'll communicate with the parents. One of the things that we've learned through the years is having an active, active school counselors helps so that if, let's say, a student is struggling in a couple of different spots, in many schools, they might get individual outreach by the, by the teachers, and what results is just, is really not actionable information. But if you have a school counselor who's leading that and sort of pulling them together and meeting together and putting a plan in place, that leads to better outcomes for kids. So there's, there's quite a bit that they do.
And it obviously becomes more complicated as a sophomore and as a junior.
Absolutely.
In the big, beginning part of senior year. How many are enrolled at the high school? What's the total number?
Students overall?
At the high school.
What are we, about twelve, twelve sixty or so? I don't, I don't have it right in front of me.
And how many guidance counselors?
We have eight currently, this will move us tonight. I guess one forty times nine is our number of kids.
Yeah, and, and at New Canaan, a lot of parents who can't afford it also have additional guidance counsel, counseling from, like, outside experts as well, that, that is a phenomenon in, in, in areas that can afford it. And I'm sorry, Dr. Lency, I didn't see the questions, because they, they just came back this afternoon, I haven't had a chance, so I apologize, I did not get to see that.
Oh, no, Rita, no, no apology necessary, we'll talk about this all night long, don't worry.
Yeah, no, so thank you.
Sure. And I'm sorry you're talking to the back of my head, I feel.
No, that's okay.
Okay, okay. All right. So we, we met even just today with Joe, and we'll get into that a little bit, but the, there's always this question about our insurance plan, what we're doing, so just very briefly, by being self-insured over the last ten years, we've saved in the plan design, other things that we've done, according to Joe, as he's sort of crunched these numbers, over twelve million dollars. We've done that in a number of different ways, and I have the breakdown, I'm, I'm glad to share it with you later if you're interested, but the, we have plan design changes, like a co-insurance past the deductible, we're still one of the only, if not the only boards of education that have that with all of our employees, which means that what happens in most places, every other place, is when you hit your deductible, it's a hundred percent covered by the Board of Ed, by the plan. We keep a ninety-ten copay, which helps to keep people sort of engaged in the work, engaged, because there's, there's a little bit of money, whatever, but it also just trends down our plan cost. So we save per year, as we develop, get our projections together, whatever else, they turn that down about four hundred thirty thousand dollars. The increase in our deductibles through the years, you can see all this. The prescription drug rebates, we've negotiated with Cigna, who is our administrator, so we use Cigna, but we're self-insured, so we, by using Cigna, they're our administrator, and we use their discounts with hospitals and doctors and other things, but it's, we hold all the money, we have, it's our plan, so we pay them an administrative fee, but they're, we're not, that's the difference between being fully insured or self-insured, right? But you still need to have an administrator, but what, we, we don't pay them all that much to do that, you know, we, our, when we look at a number like sixteen million, whatever it is, those, that's our anticipated claim cost. That, that doesn't go to Cigna, you know, that's what we pay to the doctors, to whoever's doing the work. So that's just, it's a little different than how your, what your experience may have been, so. Just again, a couple of other little things that we've done, all of which is through negotiations or otherwise, to build a sustainable insurance plan. Just as data points, again, we started back in twenty nineteen, we talked to Cigna, met with them, they actually said the, the trend since then has been closer to like twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent, but we trended at, at nine and a half percent, just as a reference point. So if you take our actual spend from twenty nineteen, if you trended at nine and a half percent ever since, that's the blue line, the green is the actual gross expenditures that we had, so you see, we're well below that and have been since, you know, twenty nineteen and even before, and this is our gross spend. It doesn't even take into account the two-plus million dollars we've gotten back through the years and excess costs and other, and individual stop-loss and other things, so. Why is it so hard to sort of, to piece together?
Wait, I'm sorry, Dr. Lency, can I ask a question? That nine point five percent healthcare spending trend, where does that come from? Like, what, what is that measuring, the trend, like, healthcare spending comparison? Where did that, where does that nine point five percent growth rate?
All right, so meeting with Cigna, they, their, their number really was closer to twelve, fourteen percent in what they saw as the trending in healthcare spending from twenty nineteen till now. Yes, yeah, across their book of business in Cigna. Well, I don't, I, was it in Connecticut or was it beyond? I'm not sure, that I'd have to circle back to them and ask them.
I'm just curious, because you could really use a lot of different numbers for that trend line, so I'm, and I've seen a lot of different ones, so I'd just be curious to know what that is, but.
Yep, okay, I, I'll get you more information on that. I think the, the important takeaway is we've trended well below.
Right.
That, and I think that, you know, I don't know what our actual number is, we're to say, what is the trend from twenty nineteen to our request in twenty twenty-five, but what's happened is by trending below, we're not compounding higher numbers as we go through, of course, right? So, okay, I'll get, I'll get you more information, Rita, I'm happy to.
Thanks.
Sure. When we're building the claims, one of the things we look at is the running claim history, and I want to just show this, I'm going to break it down a little bit finer, so it makes more sense, but the, as you'll see, the trends are that the claims are going higher, right? When you look at the, these are net claims, so net of any stop-loss reimbursement. What happens when they develop our projections, you go back twelve months. So if we just look at the last twelve months, this speaks, Rita, to your question before about plan year versus budget year.
Right.
So the blue, if you, if you see, the blue is our budget year, but really, the, you know, as we look at projections and others, we use the plan year. So as you see, September of last year till now, and you see September, October, November, so we just got our February numbers, they're pretty good, you can see that it trended below last year's February, so what it means is the one point two rolls off, and the one point one rolls on, so it's a hundred thousand dollars to the good. That's, we hadn't had a good month before that, because we'd been a little higher in September, October, November, December, so we're hoping that, you know, the March number, you see how high that is, so we're hoping that when we hit April, we have the March number, if we can improve from the one-five, there can be some more opportunity there. What we've done in the past, we'll do again, is if there are opportunities for savings, we'll bring it to the town council, let you know, and we can make that adjustment, hopefully prior to your final approval. So as we work through this, but again, one of the advantages of being self-insured is, even if we have great months after, all through, and the prediction come down, that's great news, and then the investment that we make now will help us in the future, because it goes into the Internal Services Fund and, you know, stays in the plan, so to speak, so we'll keep working with that. But that's one of the challenges that we're faced with and why that number's as high as it is, that, you know, you have the twelve-month rolling average that you use to build the projections. Now, I'm glad to go, to have Joe come, to go through the, how the projection's built, how all that happens, he's, he's done that with the Board of Finance, you're welcome to, we could also get the video and take a look, and we can answer any questions. Mike, we can talk afterwards and see what you want to do with it.
Yeah, I think just keep moving along.
Yep, yep, so, budget, you see it? Moving along to our, our capital. Couple of things around the capital, the, as you know, we've got three dimensions capital, facilities, technology, and vehicles, our special ed vehicles. Most of these are programs that have continued, painting, floor replacements in its third year. Again, if you look at the budget, the book that you have, we've got a little paragraph under each one of these, that sort of explains what it is. Glad to answer any, any questions as we go through. Not, shouldn't be any real surprises, it's actually a couple of years out, we're going to be looking at a Saks roof, that's going to be a big number. But, you know, we're doing some, we did make an adjustment to this, we pulled out our PA system for the high school in Saks, because that's about six hundred thirty thousand dollars or so, and we want to see, is there actually a way to do it where it hits the classrooms and makes, and benefits kids that way, too, instead of just pulling out some tinny speakers and putting tinny ones back in, so. We're, I've got a meeting with a vendor in a few weeks, and we're going to start that conversation and see if there's a better way to go. We're continuing our lease for our technology, and we're replacing three special ed vehicles, which has been our cycle as we've been doing that, we've got about twenty-one vehicles or so, so it's about every seven years that we cycle them out. Of course, we look at which ones have the most mileage and whatever else, and there's a replacement on a maintenance vehicle, we've worked hard to use old special ed vans for our maintenance team, but then you need, they need one that has, that's built for it, so they can have the equipment and everything they need as they're moving around the district and all. So long and short of it is, we started at three point eight, we're down to three point two for facilities tech, capital, and then our all-in capital number's four point two, which is, what did it say, about four hundred thousand or so below where we were last year?
About six hundred.
About six hundred below where we were last year, okay. And again, glad to, it should be in the budget book, you should have the explanations, whatever you need there, glad to address any questions there, and I know that it's gone late.
Can I ask a quick question about a capital?
Of course.
Project? I've heard from some people in town that there's asbestos in, at East, is there any plan? I know if you don't touch it, it's, it's not unsafe.
So as we've been replacing the floors, we, we test, and if there is, we have that taken care of before we put down the new floors.
Great.
So it's all being.
So that's baked into the?
It's all part of the project, correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we're doing phase by phase, and so, you know, and we, it's all in the summer, and the building's shut down, and it's all done with the State Department and everybody all testing and doing everything they have to do.
Right, thank you.
Yep, sure.
Dr. Lency, could you go back to the West School Capital Projects page?
Sure. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, sure, sure. I thought, I'm sorry, Christina, I thought you had a question about it. Yeah, and.
I needed to see it.
Oh, is it not on the tablets? I'm sorry.
No, you went by.
The capital.
Fast.
Gotcha. So all of that is in the budget binder, right, and I believe you picked, you have your binders, right?
Yep.
Okay. It's also online, you can get it at ncps-k12.org and go to budget right there, and you can also, you know, see all of that right there, but yes, glad to, to do that. If we shift quickly over to the Q and A, again, we're not going to go through all of these unless you'd like to, but the, we tried to provide as much information as we could to, in response to the questions, and I know, for instance, like, the first question was a ten-year lookback, we just completed an eight-year lookback, so I gave you those data, if you really, if you want to attend, I can give you the two more, but we have this, I can, we actually, last Board of Ed budget presented around all of that, too. What you'll see are the, the graphs afterwards, look at twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-four, which is this year, and then the bar to the right is the next year, and, you know, in the budget, what we're looking at. So it just shows you some of those, those trends, because I know there's some question about, you know, staffing changes through the years and where they're going. I will say that the district has made an investment on in-sourcing in various spots, and that investment has yielded great results for us. Both, again, we talked about the vans, our special education vans, other districts are meeting, we're meeting with them, giving them feedback on how we do it, because they're trying to get a program like that off the ground as a cost-saving measure, quality measure. Our in-house mechanics, maintenance crew, you know, we have HVAC, electricians, carpenters, plumbers, who work for us, manage our facilities that way, so we're not calling outside service to come in and fix things, we can do them for the most part in-house. Other ways, BCBA, other specialized services and folks that we've in-sourced, instead of needing to contract that outside, we get better people, they're with us for a long They're with us for a long time. They establish relationships. It's worked very, very well for us. So staff number, just as a pure number, only tells you so much. I think that it, really what's important is the whole picture of it all. Again, just the literacy academy launch and downtown campus, three indispensable programs that we have for our kids, all require staffing. But it's an awful lot better than having them go elsewhere. We want to keep our kids in the district. You don't do that. Again, it's cost-effective, and it's a better program for kids.
Are you doing any kind of analysis on like trends over time with special ed costs and all these in-house programs?
We do. Yeah, we do look at that. And we look at, I think our per pupil in comparison to others is one data point. But we do look at our, our trending in special education, both our prevalence rate, right? So what's our identification rate look like? And then our spend per. And our identification rate has been very competitive, if not below the DURG. And that, I think, in part is due to the response intervention program that we have, that Dr. Grant talked about last night. The, the spending is similarly on the lower side where we look, well, I actually have a chart that I'd be glad to share that looks at. It's a little tricky because it's not all sort of captured the same way. For instance, in some districts, an assistant principal really serves as a special education administrator in a building. But they're not, they're sort of, you know, tracked as an assistant principal. So that's a little tricky to draw fair comparisons. But we, we pulled something together that we'd be glad to share.
I had another question about, you know, outplacements versus settlements. I mean, is it worth looking into an, an in-house attorney to handle settlement-type issues? I mean, would that reap some kind of savings down the line?
It could. It could be worth looking at.
All right, can you make sure you're talking into your microphones? Because I couldn't hear that.
Oh, sure. So a question was about.
Not you, Dr., well, yeah, the other folks. Thanks.
Sorry about that.
Okay, good. Oh, my voice carries even.
Your voice I can hear loud and clear.
No, it's, it's a different thing.
So, yeah, I do think, a few years ago, we had a conversation about would it make sense to, you know, hire an in-house attorney to do that sort of work? Because we do have, it's one attorney who does our special education and our labor law, right? So if you could find the right person, that might be something to consider.
I think I was wanting to ask for the 10-year thing because I saw numbers of enrollment go relatively from about 4,000 10 years ago to about 4,000 now. While teachers and related support went from about 400 up to 435.
Sure.
And so my question was, and I think you've answered some of this in some of the Board of Finance, a lot of that is special ed.
Yes.
A lot of that is some mandated things. A lot of that is literacy academy. Then again, I think New Canaan has the luxury of having, as you proposed in your budget, a director of innovation. I suggest not too many other high schools have that. That's a real luxury. We're going to be paying for that, but that's a, that's a real luxury. Math coaches, classroom coaches, I don't know how many other high schools or elementary schools across the state have the level of coaches that we have. But clearly, the outcomes justify what you have been doing for the last 15 years. And I'm not going to argue the outcomes. I think the outcomes are fabulous. But that was just what I was looking at and trying to get some comfort with a budget that's up 6.5%. And if you look at a 10-year trend of the BOE budget, the education budget, it's been about 12% higher today than it was 10 years ago. If we forecast that out 10 more years, we're looking at $120, $125 million budget for schools. And we've got taxpayers who are always clamoring to lower taxes. The grand list is not going to be done next year and the year after, and the year after. So our mill rate is going to creep up as all these other demands and budgets creep up. So I'm, I'm just trying to reflect that concern.
Yeah, well, and very fairly said. The, I will share, I think it's important to note, in that concern, so the Director of Innovation is a good example. You know, I know, I know you said high school, but it's K-12 and those things, right? So when we conceptualized and created that position, we actually, we had a K-8 science coordinator. And we've rolled that position into the Director of Innovation, right? So we do pay a little bit more. It's our administrative position. But as a result, the, the responsibilities were greatly expanded, including evaluation of staff and other things. So we didn't, it wasn't just additive, right? We took, that's, and it's the same person in the role, just growing that way. And we do try to do that. And I think that one of the, what I found revealing in putting the presentation together that I shared with the Board of Ed last time, that I, again, I'd be glad to come back and do, is that the, the way in which we, the strategic way that we approach it, right? So as we looked at adding staff where we needed to, we really looked to see, or can we reposition from somewhere else? So you're not going to see a spike in coaches or a spike in this, and if you do see an increase in one spot, you'll generally see that there's a decrease in another as we've been responsive to the needs of the kids that are in front. Now, you're right, the total numbers have gone up, and that is driven by program for the most part. Special education, the needs that students are presenting with today are more complex and require more support in some ways. But again, the literacy academy, the alternative school, our launch program, others, all of those things do require staff. And the, like the in-house transportation that we have, we've had to add a couple of drivers to that, you know, since, you know, those years ago. So all of that does require, but I do think that in-housing it is a more economical, it's a more efficient decision, and it yields better results. Another example, just because I know it, there's a lot, there are a lot of moving parts here. We're the only district I know of that has, that entirely in-sources our cafeteria program. So some have, like managers that work for the district, but then they do it through a third party, through a partner. We don't do it that way. Everyone in that, in our cafeteria, everybody who works there works for the New Canaan Public Schools. So there's 32, 34 more, more employees that we have. But we run the best restaurant in town, right? So. At a profit, right? So, you know, it's, it's staff, it might be more staff-intensive in some ways. But I think that it's a, the bigger picture around that is it's costs and certainly outcomes, as you mentioned. And I think that the costs might be surprisingly greater if we try to trend down in the staffing in some of these ways. So I'm, again, I'm glad to share that presentation or more information. You know, and again, some of the special education increases, which, you know, those are all mandated and all.
I hope the state mandated right-to-read program is something we can somehow demonstrate is unnecessary for us. But I don't think we're going to have a whole lot of luck finding Hartford on that.
Well, I can be stubborn, so we're. Yep, yep. You know, it's, it's a core belief of mine that boards of education need to have autonomy, local control around the decisions that are most important. And certainly, how we're teaching our students to, to read is perhaps the single most important thing that we do. I also believe that the, the best curriculum is those that are developed locally by in-house experts who know the community, know the needs, know the kids, know the schools. And I would hold our curriculum and program up to anyone's as, you know, as a model curriculum for them to follow. And I think our results, again.
Do we think there might be any corresponding decrease maybe in staffing costs if you have more teachers coming in sort of at the entry level and you have retirements at the highest step, right? So that could, that could kind of pull down.
So that's our retirement differential. So we are anticipating, what, about $300,000 or so in savings there?
Okay.
In that differential. Now, there are other costs downstream around professional training and learning and evaluation and, you know, all those kinds of things that come.
Salaries and benefits being 82% of the budget.
Yeah, it does help to.
If even just.
Oh, it does.
You know, some, there could be that.
In the teachers, it does. In other bargaining units, it doesn't. Administrators, coaches, others, you really don't have those turnover savings, but you do for the teachers.
Yeah.
Yep. And we've had quite a bit of turnover. That's why we didn't anticipate as much this year going into it. But I think we have six or eight retirements in hand, so we're in a pretty good place.
Any other questions for Dr. Lutzey, the Board of Ed, Chairman?
I just, I just have, can we just go back to outsourcing for a second? Because I think that's really interesting that you're saying that it's, you found it more cost-effective to have all of these different programs, the cafeteria programs, bed program, all that in-house versus outsourcing. And I'm not, I don't, I don't question it, but I wonder, just in terms of how you're calculating it. So I'm, I'm assuming you are incorporating all the benefits that are involved having it in-house, not just the salaries. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, absolutely. And so there are just a couple of, and there's much more detailed information that goes into this. But just in the big picture, I talked to districts where they, they have to contract with a outside service for transportation of their special education students. And that can cost upwards of $125,000 per student per year for the vans that we run. There, and we've got 21 vans, and we're moving more kids than that, you know, as we go back and forth. We've got some economies of scale as we're doing this. We have our outplays. So if we didn't have our launch program, for instance, or let's use the alternative school, the downtown campus, right? So even if, if half of those students had to be placed in an, in an external environment, in a different spot, we're well over, we're close to a million dollars. You know, so those are, you know, it's just, again, in the big picture, where, when you pay for the services outside, you're paying for all of the, you're paying for the service from the person, that the person's giving you. But you're also paying the organization that's running it, that's managing and organizing it, and all of those pieces, just like by running a self-insured insurance plan. There's not an insurance company making the profit off of what we're doing that allows them to work. So we are, we're able to control costs more that way and be more strategic in what we're doing. And again, the, I also, again, the quality is better, without question, in my mind. And to those that want to come back and, you know, come back into the district. But there are, there are lots of ways that, again, another example, that's an easier, easy one, is our maintenance crew, right? So instead of bringing in an electrician or a plumber or an HVAC, whoever, to work on our level-one support needs, if it's a boiler or something else across the district. Our guys are, for instance, we had a problem over at West the other day where a pipe issue with the new system, because they're just commissioning the system. And there was an issue with the boiler. And instead of having to call in an outside service and mobilize them and have them come and do the repair, our guys were able to get right on site, do the repair, get it done. So now the building's not closed for a day, which it may have had to be if we had to call somebody else and wait for them to get there. And they do it as part of their work versus whatever the cost would be to mobilize an external group. So, I mean, really, I'm glad, I can get as granular, you know, if you like, around that and afterwards. But I am, I believe, and I've seen, and I, and I've gone through the data with Bill, with Jill and otherwise, that, yeah, doing these things in-house is a better, more economical approach. And better meaning that the outcomes are better.
Thank you.
There's also some like intangible, not cost-conscious benefits to keeping kids, particularly special education kids, in the community and in the schools, if you can. And even if you have to outplace for a year to manage a particular, or, you know, get somebody back on track. I think having that family and that child remain a part of the school community is so critical and vital to their social and emotional learning and just their maturation. And, and I just find that to be such a strength of our school system, is creating this environment where every child feels like, no matter what they're coming in the door with, their potential is maximized. And I think we do an amazing, amazing job at that, and some of that is not translatable into dollars, so to speak. You know, I think that it's, it's a reason why a lot of people move here. And everything, all of that diversity of thought and of different, you know, differently-abled kids, it, it makes for a better human coming out of our school system. So I just applaud you guys tremendously for that. I mean, I moved one of my kids from private school into our school system, and I could not be happier. He's done exceptionally well. So I think that, you know, in addition, obviously, we're budget-conscious, and we, and we, we want to maximize every taxpayer dollar that goes into this. And I think that you guys do a phenomenal job of doing that.
Thank you, thank you. An example of what you're talking about, and I absolutely, I wholeheartedly agree with you. When we developed and implemented the downtown campus, we did it in a way so that those, we talked about guidance counselors before. The students that are participating there are also eligible for extracurricular clubs, activities, sports, VPA. And they see their guidance counselor from the high school, and they loop back and forth. They're a part of, they're, they, their identity is the downtown campus. But they also can participate in everything that the high school and the high school community has to offer. And so just as you're saying, our students that are in launch, you know, their work, they're coming through the central office all the time, and they're helping us out, and they're doing different things, and they're working the community, all of that. Right, that's a core value of who we are.
With that, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. That was what we were looking for. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Great, thank you all. Thank you. Thanks, Rita.
Thank you, Dr. Lutzey.
Thanks, Christina.
Thank you, BOE.
Discussion.
Who moved to adjourn?
I think they should stay a little longer.
Do we really need to adjourn?
Mike, could you just verify?
Christina's talking.
Yes, Christina.
Who moved to adjourn and who seconded, please?
Eric seconded the adjournment.
Who moved to adjourn?